I welcome the City Council and the MAC PAC Committee in their joint work session this evening on January 25, 2022. I look down, we have 44 on the call. I think it's one of the largest groupings that we've ever had. So congratulations to the MAC PAC and all the good work that they've done. So I call this meeting to order. We have one item of business this evening that the Council is going to go over. It's the first of the year, and we're going to be looking at our City Council Group Agreement and just go over that briefly before we get into the presentation by MAC PAC. And so our Council President, Remy Drabkin, is going to introduce the topic, and we're just going to review those, see if there's any questions, setting the tone for our working agreement for 2022. Nothing different, just a review. So, Remy, would you go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council and Budget Committee, and everybody that's here today. We just want to take a moment to go over and read out loud our group agreements in terms of just kind of an opportunity to remind ourselves that we've come here all in service to do our best for the citizens of McMinnville, and that our main goal at the end of the day is always good governance, and whatever we can do to that end, we should do. And, Mr. Mayor, did you want to do an out-loud reading of the...
Yeah, I think what we do is we've got seven items on that work agreement, Remy, and we could read it and just see if there's any discussion among Council. They've seen it many times, but again, this is our opportunity to review it so we can set it in motion again for 2022 as we begin the year.
Okay, well, fantastic. I am going to tell you that I don't have my muck boots or my jacket off yet from the winery, therefore I don't have the group agreements in front of me. And so if you would do the honor of reading them, or if we could round robin it while I get into not-wet clothing, not on screen, and go on with our meeting, oh, it'd be great.
Just to let everyone know, Remy was boggling today, and that's an all-day affair, and she let me know that. So I'll go ahead, and if Council has a copy of the group agreement, I'll just call on us. I'll start out. Number one, I will individually support the collective discussion-making of the Council. If I disagree with the decisions made by the Council, I will exercise my convictions without personalizing the issue and without eroding the collective repetition of the Council. Once a decision is made, I will respect that decision. Okay? I'll just go across. Kelly, do you have yours out, if you'd do number two?
Sure. Thank heavens, I had it easy. I will respect other members of the Council, even if we disagree philosophically by articulating my view, listening openly to their perspectives and rationale, sharing my position and intended actions with the Council in a timely manner.
Thank you, Kelly. Zach, I have you up next, if you've got yours by you.
You're a gentleman, giving me the short one. I can take three and four, if that's good.
That'd be great.
Okay. I will not personalize issues or decisions. And number four, if I have a concern or issue with another Council member or mayor, I will go to that person first, and in a positive, private, and timely manner, and share that concern. I will present my feelings and how those feelings affect me.
Thank you, Zach. Number five, Chris?
I will recognize that the Council's role is to set policy and not to be administrators.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to page two. I don't know that I see any other member of Council on at this point.
Want me to read the next one, too?
Go ahead.
Number six, I will engage in a robust dialogue with the community in a constructive and inclusive manner.
And then, number seven, I will follow the intention and the law concerning doing Council business outside of the Council meetings. Again, this is our City Council Group Agreement. We've had discussion about it, we've refined it a number of times. Any member of the Council have any discussion they'd like to have around that as we move into 2022?
Yeah, I'll go, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Zach.
So when I first started, we sat down and went through this, you and I, in your office, back in the good old days when we could hang out in an office together and not get each other violently ill, and went through this, and it was great, and then signed it, and, you know, as a new member, signed and joined. And then, not too long after that, we had a conversation at the fire department about redoing this, part of Jensen Strategies, a bunch of work they did, and they walked us through a new version of this, and we resigned at that point, and now we've gone through this iteration. Just wondering what you want us to do now, if you think we should have kind of gone through, whether we did or didn't change anything in the last six months or whatever, and just kind of going through this now, if you want us to all re-sign this again? And do you think we'll integrate a new resigning every year as just part of a decision discussion update, just good to refresh this? What are you thinking on signing on and all agreeing to this? What's your strategy?
My thought would be, what does the Council feel? I mean, we've had lots of discussion, and I think we've got an agreement where we're at, but signing may be appropriate, but I want to get your insight. So what's your feel, Zach?
I'd say, yeah, I think you've talked a lot about onboarding new councilors and as part of creating a system around that, and I think this would be a great first of the month, first start of the year, whether or not it's new councilors, and you get one new counselor, and you got a whole new Council, and even just every year, going through this again, just to refresh and reread it, and if it's nothing more than we all, seven of us take one and read it and move on, if there's nobody new, great. Otherwise, I think it's important that if we're having this and we're all agreeing to it, we've had the precedent of signing it, that we all should be signing it. So I think it'd be good, and to institute that review and re-sign when there's new people.
Thank you. I think we take note of that, that if we do have changes throughout the year, that we make this, again, a prime part of the orientation for new councilors. Let's run across to Kelly. What are your thoughts, Kelly?
Actually, I think signing in at the beginning of the year isn't a bad idea. I'm not sure we need to go into an in-depth discussion about it, although we usually do touch on it when we do goal setting, so... But yeah, I think looking it over and signing it once a year is a good idea.
Thank you. Chris?
I think we should sign it in blood.
We've shed a little blood getting to this point, haven't we?
Sorry, I couldn't resist that. I think this is fine.
Great. Okay, I'm going to... Remy, your thoughts?
No, I think this is great, and one of the reasons that I do really appreciate, you know, us taking the opportunity to review it, is that sometimes these types of reviews just jog us into being so thoughtful, and, you know, I'm thinking about that exercise we did not that long ago where we did this practice of reflective listening, and how immediately everybody was great at it. And so I'm happy to refresh these and sign on and keep it as part of our practice and onboarding practice. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. As I go through the now 54 that are on the line, I don't see any other councilors, if any other are on. Please...
Hi, Mayor, it's Sal. Sorry I was late getting to the meeting. This looks good to me. I agree with the comments that have been made previously, so thank you.
Okay. Okay, so Claudia, if you can get that out to us to sign, and one way maybe just to send it out, and by email, and reply that we sign her name electronically through email, then we'll have that available. Again, thank you for allowing us to do this. We were looking at something that we felt that would be pertinent at the beginning of the year to kind of set our focus. I'll tell you, I think we've made real inroads in this work agreement, and again, it's just by way of starting the year off that we bring it up. So thank you. That now takes us to the second item on our work session and agenda, and primarily the purpose of getting together tonight, the MAC PAC. Well, I'm not going to give any comments, because there's a lot that have comments to do, but what I can tell you is, for the MAC PAC, I think you're going to have some withdrawals, because you're not going to be meeting anymore. And, you know, I look at this group, and I feel like I know so many of you and your comments and your passions, and so tonight we'll be able to bring that all together. So with that being said, what I'd like to do is call on the Parks and Recs Director, Susan Muir, and Library Director, Jenny Berg, to introduce the topic. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and councilors, and MAC PAC for being here tonight. It's pretty exciting to be here. We're happy to be delivering the final report to you about the future of library and Park and Rec facilities. It's been an absolutely crazy two years to get this to you, and I know we're really looking forward to the discussion tonight. We mentioned in the staff report that we aren't going to give a formal presentation tonight, there's no PowerPoint, we just want to have voices in the room and conversation. I am going to highlight a little bit of history and then also acknowledge some of the people who did put a lot of hard work into this. So to back up to the start of this project, in the fall of 2018, seems like a long time ago, the city hired a firm to provide facility condition assessments for 28 city-owned properties. And through those assessments, we learned that there were significant deferred maintenance issues and deficiencies in several of the city-owned buildings. And then through further conversations, seven of those buildings were then identified as having no return on investment, as their conditions were so far deteriorated, and two of those were in Parks and Rec. As a result of those findings, Council funded Phase One of this project in the 1819 budget, and we got underway. That, what we call the Phase One Final Report, came to Council on July 17 in 2019. That was the meeting we had on the second floor of the community center, if you remember. And at that meeting, you heard the consultant team, who will look familiar to you tonight, present their findings after doing a community engagement process, where we heard from over 1,500 community members. They analyzed the conditions of our facilities and the finances, and ultimately recommended that the Council move forward, and you ended up moving forward and directing us to further analyze replacing the Aquatic Center and the Community Center with one new building. We were also looking at a rehab to the Senior Center, and then also you directed us appropriately to wrap the library into the next phase of the process. So the next phase of the process then was funded in the 1920 and 2021 budgets, and in January of 2020, the City Council appointed this group that's here with you tonight, and the purpose of that was to connect the community to the second phase of the project. As you know, they've named themselves MAC PAC, and at one point had a little used tagline called "MAC to the Future." So, and I just want to quickly acknowledge, you're going to hear from each of the MAC PAC members, and we just can't thank them enough for their leadership and engagement throughout this whole project. It's been a crazy two years, and I think anybody would acknowledge, it's just been a crazy two years. It's been a lot of work. They were an amazing group to work with, and we really appreciate them. Their commitment to our community, to the library, to Parks and Rec, and to our future has been inspiring in the time of the pandemic when we really, really needed it. So I really want to thank MAC PAC. I also want to thank the staff team on this. This was truly an interdepartmental effort, and not just between the library and Parks and Rec, although that's been really awesome, too. We had Kylie Byer, Amanda Guile-Hinman, Noel Amaya, Heather Richards, Jennifer Quayar, and Jeff Towery all touched this MAC PAC project in really meaningful ways, and were really helpful to us in the process. And then we had the Parks and Rec and the library staff who helped out and pitched in on top of their normal day jobs of providing excellent customer service to our community. Rob Porter, Katie Noid, Steve Ganser, Erin Gwynn, Wendy Whitesitt, and Jenny Berg, obviously, is the co-lead for this project, all deserve a big thank you as well. And I want to acknowledge Allison Horn is here from Lynnfield University, and she was assigned as our official liaison for one of the partners that we had identified. I mentioned the consultant team. Ken Ballard is here tonight, you may recall him. Jim Cavillage and Heather DeGrella from Opsys Architecture are here as well. They are the ones that really brought all this together in a visual way for MAC PAC to look at and also to present to you tonight in the final report. And then thanks to City Council for funding this along the way. It's really been great to work on this project and be here tonight. So, as I mentioned, tonight's a little different than what we would normally do, and we chose to do that because we really think it's important for each MAC PAC member to put their voice in this project and let you know how they are thinking about it. So I'm going to turn it over to Meredith Maxfield. She's one of the co-chairs on this project. The other co-chair, Ken Rolfe, had a work commitment tonight that he couldn't get out of, so he won't be here tonight. Meredith's going to say a few things, then the City Council, and then she'll facilitate through the MAC PAC group, and then, Mayor, I think, will kick it over to you, and you can facilitate through the Council part of it. We've got the staff here, the consultant here, and of course, MAC PAC. Any questions anyone has for any of us will be able to answer at the end. And then, at the end of the meeting, Meredith would like to close the joint meeting the way MAC PAC has closed each of its meetings over the last two years, and she will review that when we get there with you. And then, as follow-up for staff, we will be back to you on February 22, outlining next steps of this process, and we are looking forward to the conversation, and I'll introduce Meredith Maxfield.
Good evening. MAC PAC wants to thank the City Council for the opportunity to meet with you tonight. We know you are super busy and have lots of meetings, and we changed the format of this meeting up a little bit in order to hopefully really benefit everyone participating. We are having this discussion under the assumption that everyone participating has gotten a chance to read our final report. I also want to take time to thank the City staff and the consultants for all their assistance and their professionalism. This process hasn't been easy. As Susan mentioned, the COVID pandemic affected all of our lives, and of course, disrupted our meetings and our process, and the city budget shortfall also affected our final product. We also realized along the way that we all are very excited about outdoor spaces, and sometimes got a little distracted, and are excited for the future outdoor master plan. I think I can speak for all of us in saying we gained a greater appreciation for you, the City Council, and the hard work that goes into all of your decisions. You have a committee here of very involved, engaged community members. I have loved getting to know them and working with them. I hope that you take some of our advice, and you let us help and support you moving this project forward. We didn't always agree, and sometimes we got stuck debating details like how wide a swimming lane should be, but it was always because we cared. And collaboration and compromise is how you get the best outcome for everyone, and we wanted a usable final product. So why did you form MAC PAC? Why were we willing to join, and why are we here tonight? It's because the state of our facilities is currently unacceptable. Maybe you, like me, have tried to bring a stroller to the Aquatic Center and learned there is no elevator up to the spectator seating. Or maybe you've noticed that there's buckets collecting rainwater on the track in the community center. Or maybe you, like some of us, have been to the library and noticed that books are being stored on top of the bookshelves, so there's not enough space for the current collections, let alone new collections. Or maybe you've been to the Senior Center, and you've had to walk through the main room disrupting a class in order to get to classrooms in the back, because there's no hallway getting to them. These things, our current facilities, they aren't cutting it. We can and will do better with modern, up-to-date facilities that fit the needs of our community. Thank you for this charge, and thank you for your time tonight. We are very excited to give each member of the MAC PAC a piece of the floor, give them a few minutes to share the answer to three questions. One, what is your greatest worry about this project? Two, what is your greatest hope for this project? And three, what advice do you have for the decision-makers? I wanted to acknowledge really quick that three of our members couldn't make it, Ronnie Lucas, Michael Lindbergh, and my co-chair, Ken Rolfe, as Susan mentioned. So we're going to start this off with BJ Barlow.
Hello, thank you for including my participation in this event tonight. I'm going to go and order that Meredith just described in regards to the questions for response, and the first question being, what's my greatest fear for this project? Holistically, everything being posed, I feel, has been tried and proven to be successful within the city, and for that reason, I don't have any real significant fears that the city, or in regards to the facility the city is introducing. The city has a clear understanding of the costs and benefits of operating a library, senior, and community center and pool. Further, I believe that the city has the legal, financial, and administrative competency to execute a project of this capacity in a successful manner. However, I do believe that there will be challenges, and I think that the greatest challenge I anticipate will be creating a facility that meets the needs of today while also being relevant for the future. Specifically, I believe that there will be a challenge in creating a facility that exceeds our current needs, but will be necessary in order to remain useful in size and scope through the expected service life of the new facility. I believe that this could be most noticeable in the initial funding of the project, and additionally, and how there would be a planned approach to expanding, updating, or changing the infrastructure as future needs of the community arise. My greatest hope for this project is that we can expand the diversity of programs being offered and the clientele served without reducing our support to the currently thriving programs that already exist. We currently have a very strong competitive swimming program, and I fear prioritizing other portions of recreational swimming and a budget could allow us to want to create a facility with expansive diversity as opposed to strongly supporting the healthy programs that are already there. So I think that there needs to be a fine balance to recognizing the needs of the community. I also hope that we accomplish building a facility that meets post-pandemic and today's extreme weather needs in society. I hope that we can accomplish this, not simply by using greener materials and installing a bunch of HEPA filters, but by also creating open air space as when possible. I believe that we entered into this process pre-pandemic, so I believe that there are things that could potentially be reevaluated in that. For example, the elevated indoor walking track could maybe be covered, walking track outdoors, or the indoor playground could potentially be covered, open-air playground. Expansive corridors could also maybe be covered, walkways between facility attractions. I believe that this could potentially lower the cost of development, but also lower the energy demands and provide naturally better air quality throughout the complex. The advice I would have for the Council tonight is, as we concluded this process, I developed a bit of a concern about trying to house everything under one continuous roof, and that that could create a challenge with coming up with the initial investment and us being able to adapt the needs of the infrastructure in the future as the community needs might change. So for that reason, I would encourage the Council to consider maybe reflecting on this development as a campus or village style, to maximize the land investment and maximize the use of supporting infrastructure such as a parking lot, restrooms, or administrative space while allowing for a phased approach of the initial development, and also the redevelopment or expansion of individual elements as the needs of the community grow or change. I think that that is the bulk of what I would have for input tonight. I would like to turn the floor back over.
Thank you. Anna Barsati?
Greetings, everyone. Thank you for including us in this conversation. It really was an honor to be part of MAC PAC, and it's great to be here this evening. One of my main concerns is the timeliness of this project and moving forward as quickly as possible. I worry that a number of private organizations and nonprofits, both inside and outside of McMinnville, are filling some of the gaps that have been left by both our facilities and some of our programming. And while we have citizens who have resources that are able to travel inside and outside, we have a number of citizens within our population that don't have those resources, and my concern lies on the opportunities that they're missing out on that are incredibly beneficial to their health and wellness. So my main concern would be to encourage the Council and everyone to move as forward as quickly as possible. Is my connection still okay? Can you hear...
Good enough. Yeah, keep going. I'll let you know if there's an issue.
Yes. Okay, thank you, sorry. In terms of... Thank you. Okay, thank you, Meredith. Well, timely is my concern. I'm also very hopeful about the timing of our project. Coming into two years with the pandemic, a lot of people are still asking the question of how do we want to move forward? What do we want to have tried to carry with us that we've learned? And I see this as direct action in response to what we've all experienced, that we all desperately need connection and coming together, and our timing is spot-on in terms of that. I believe that the years that we've had divisiveness, that this proposal is only going to bring people together in that spirit of cooperation, collaboration that was spoken to earlier. And finally, for a piece of advice for the Council, to reach far and wide for support, look for people who will be go to unique populations, and that this really is something by everyone and for everyone in a really unique, powerful time to let everyone see that their piece of pie is on the table, and that we really need to eat that pie. Everybody has to buy in and be there, whether you're a swimmer or a bookworm. You enjoy meals at the Senior Center. We have this opportunity where so many people are required at the table, and that that table really is for all of them. So to not shortchange the legacy or the dream that we have with this, but to move forward in that spirit of cooperation and dreaming big with that legacy. Thank you.
Wayne Bond?
Thank you, Meredith. As is usually by want, I'm going to approach this a little differently than everybody else. To give the councilors a little background on where I'm coming from, I'm a retired consulting actuary. I currently run the Friends of the Library book sale, and I play saxophone in four different musical groups. musical groups. As a retired consulting actuary, I am extremely impressed with the way that the staff and the leaders handled this entire process. Every meeting required specific deliverables. Whenever I wanted to get information, it was provided quickly, accurately. The city council needs to remember how professionally this process was handled. As the grand poobah in charge of the book sale for the library, I am very pleased with the plan for the future library. It has room not only to serve the current needs of the city, but also to expand and cover the city in the future. The council needs to remember that you're building not for today, you're building for a lifetime. You have to make room for that. Finally, as a musician, I am extremely disappointed with the decision to remove the performance venue from the proposed replacement of the community center. The current community center is the only indoor venue that provides enough space for one of my groups, the Second Winds Community Band, which has over 50 people in it, and its audience, which runs for 450 to 500 people. While I understand the reasoning behind the staff's decision that this is not necessarily a major effort, something that is a core responsibility, it is a service that's been provided for over the past 10 years to the community. The council needs to remember that even removing something that is not deemed to be a core service can and will cause backlash and concern among those who have been using this process. Again, I'm very impressed with professionalism and the way this was handled. Thank you for my time, and I'm actually being, as Meredith will note, I'm being very succinct. Thank you.
Kevin Chambers?
Hello, everyone, and thank you for letting us have the opportunity to speak today. My worry for this project is mostly financial. One of the things that I don't think we really got to a good answer was how to not just fund the building of this project, but to fund the ongoing programming and staffing that would need to run a facility of this size as well as the library and the senior center. And I know that just the opportunities for funding, ongoing funding are a lot more difficult than capital campaign raising. So that's my main worry is building a space that is big enough to meet our needs, but is also we are able to fund the programs and the staff need to run it. My biggest hope is, I come from, my main interaction with Parks and Rec Department is through adult athletics. It's been a place for me to build really good communities in this town. I left and came back and didn't have a lot of friends or people that I was able to know, and I really found that through the Parks and Recreation Department. And I hope that we can continue to do that. And that builds into my space, my idea of what my advice would be, which is our group really looked, I think, through all of our decisions through an equity lens, and I think it's important to remember that going forward as you make decisions, that this should be a space that is welcoming and open and accessible to all people and that can really try to bring diverse communities together, because I think that's really the power of public spaces like this is to really be a place where we can come together and create community. Thank you.
Andrew Jones?
Thank you, City Council and Mayor Hill for giving us this opportunity to speak, and thanks to Director Muir and the city staff for all the work in facilitating our meetings. I'm president of the McMinnville Swim Club, and as such, I represent over 100 McMinnville kids and their families. And we are carrying on a long, vibrant tradition of swimming in McMinnville, and that tradition includes several high school state championships and some national level swimmers. And we also remain one of the most affordable and inclusive clubs in the state, and that's in large part thanks to our partnership with the city. My greatest fear about this project is that we lose sight of that great tradition of swimming here, that we build a facility that's either too small on opening day or that's so big that it prices out the users and puts a burden on the city and its taxpayers. My greatest hope, yeah, I'm hopeful about the whole thing, it's very exciting, but I'm most excited about bringing back to McMinnville an outdoor aquatics feature, a pool and a play area, so that we can stop having our families go travel to Carlton or Carvalis to play and have families come in instead and play. And my advice, I think that it's very important that before we go for bond or seek other financing, that the public has a definite idea of what the size of the facility is and what amenities will be included and who our partners will be, because it will be very difficult to support or generate support for the project unless we know all of that. Thank you.
Lisa Macy Baker?
Number one, council, thank you for your service. You guys put an incredible amount of time and energy into our city, and you can't be thanked enough. So my greatest worry for this project is that this project dies, and we've wasted a ton of time and energy and money. I'm also worried that if indeed it happens, that we partner with an entity that won't positively impact this project or help us meet the goal of equitable, inclusive service. My greatest hope is that we complete it, even if phased, in a timely manner. And my advice is invest in the health and well-being of our community by investing in Parks and Recreation and its programming and staff. I would also suggest keeping a Citizens Advisory Committee involved in this process, even if it's smaller than this large group. And like we've talked about with phasing, if necessary, consider very thoughtful phasing without compromising what's truly imperative. That's that we need a bigger pool, we're bursting at the seams of that current pool. That it makes fiscal and practical sense to have a one-stop shopping indoor recreation facility that is directly tied to outdoor recreation. And it also makes planning sense to have our library slash what I dream being a cultural center, one-day bookend, one of our most precious assets in McMinnville, and that's our amazing downtown. So, thank you.
All right, now myself. My greatest worry is that this project will be put on the back burner, that will continue to put Band-Aids on facilities that need overhaul, and that we will then unexpectedly have to close our facilities and be left with nothing for a time because we won't have prepared. I just read a quote last night that you can't plant a sapling when you need shade now. And so I hope we can consider that. My greatest hope is that the excitement for this project will grow, that the community will rally around our vision, and that we will build the optimal rec center, and that the phased approach will make sense of not doing all the buildings at the same time. My advice to the decision makers is that you take a tour of our current facilities. I was able to go on a tour in February of 2020, right before the pandemic hit, and it doesn't take an expert to see that the HVAC systems are frightening and not in great shape. And I also would say that we should make sure we have a plan in place for ongoing maintenance and running the programs in these facilities. We don't want to build a great, beautiful building and then not be able to run anything inside of it or staff it. Thank you. All right, now, Kitri McGuire?
Hi, council, and thanks for involving MACPAC as part of tonight's agenda. I just want to start by saying that this project is a total dream for all of us, and that's why we're involved. And I can easily imagine my kiddos swimming at the new facility during the summers or playing tennis outside. I can imagine walking to the new library from my house to pick out a book in a beautiful facility that bookends Third Street, no pun intended, maybe a little intention, and that looks out on City Park. And I can even imagine myself, maybe a few years down the road, in a beautiful senior center watering plants in a community greenhouse. And bringing these types of visions to life in our community will help set the stage for serving our citizens for a really long time. So I appreciate that you guys are considering this project. The tricky is part of the next stage will be finding, I think Kevin called them right-size financial solutions. We need solutions that are going to serve the long-term needs of our community while also being financially viable to build and maintain. So creative funding solutions, strategic partnerships that are smart and thoughtful are absolutely going to be needed and should be viewed as opportunities. Phasing would be an excellent approach, and that was something that we really widely discussed in many of our meetings. What MACPAC and your staff are proposing has been through a ton of scrutiny, and if there's anything that I want you to leave here knowing, it's that what we've proposed here is the most flexible and right-fit project that is going to meet our community's growing needs for the quality of life through a lens of the city's core services and on the financial side could be reasonably funded now and maintained in the long term. I want to encourage the council to respect the proposed staffing for these facilities. That also went through a lot of scrutiny, through which we reaffirmed everything we already know about McMinnville, that relationships, communication, a sense of community are what make this a special place to live in and grow up in. Adequate staffing to maintain the programs and maintain the assets to avoid costly repairs in the long term and as an opportunity to show a public face to our citizens will make these projects amazing and loved gathering places for a really long time. These assets have opportunity to retain a talented workforce, to make our community a comfortable place for our elders to live in and enjoy, and a place that our young people want to stay in and raise their own families in. So I have a lot of hope for these projects. Lastly, I just want to give a big shout out to the city staff that was working on these projects with us. We felt listened to and taken seriously throughout this project, and they put in so many hours behind the scenes, and I want to make sure they know how much we appreciate them and their hard work and that the council knows as well what great staff they have. So, thank you very much.
Ryan McGurven?
Thanks, everyone, for having us here tonight, and this process has been great with one exception. Every time we have to do this, I always follow Kitri, and she says things way better than I do. So I'm going to sum up real quick. Some of these might be repeats, but my biggest worry is that the final product doesn't look like what we proposed, whether that be for, you know, budget reasons or something else, downsizing, you know, whatever, whatever happens. My two other worries are that, you know, kind of along the same lines, that our community won't see the vision. I think we've worked really hard to develop something that, you know, our community to be proud of and, you know, kind of a visionary type of facilities, and that they won't understand that, and at the same time, they might be turned off by the cost of what the bond may look like. My greatest hopes, there's a lot, that the new expanded or the new facilities will allow for new and expanded programs that are already thriving or established programs will see an increase in participation. But probably the two biggest ones to me is that the opportunity for broader community outreach, you know, to reach part of our community or parts of our community that maybe have been underserved. And I think this is something to be a great source of civic pride, you know, something that our community and our region can be proud of. My advice to the decision makers, and I believe Lisa mentioned something similar, but to, you know, to keep the MACPAC people involved or informed, you know, I think we can help and have connections to, you know, the kind of the wants and desires of the community. I think community outreach is going to be a key, and, you know, you guys have experience in bonds and so on and knowing how that works. But then the biggest one that, you know, I think that all of us can benefit from is keeping in mind that this isn't just a recreational bond, that there is something for everyone. And, you know, there's certain parts of it that maybe got more attention or more time that we've spent working on, but this really is something that will benefit every single person in our community, you know, in some shape or form. Maybe not now, but maybe sometime down the road or, you know, or so on. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Karen Austrian?
Good evening, and I'd like to thank the council for allowing us to be here and talk to you tonight. I'd also like to thank Susan and Jenny for steering us through this difficult process and long process, as well as Meredith and Ken as our facilitators, as well as all the staff members that worked right alongside us. Pretty much my worries, hopes and advice have been covered tonight, so I'm just going to be very quick. My biggest worry would be that the general populace is going to balk at the price tag, first off, because we all know it's going to involve a bond which will involve taxes of some sort, but I'm hoping that all venues or avenues will be explored through grants and donation and sponsorship, corporate sponsorship and whatnot. My greatest hope is that the people of our town will be able to envision the future and product and what it will mean to the city, both as possible future revenue, but more so to me, providing the community with a top-tier recreational facility that I am hoping would really be the envy of not only our county but of the state, because I think the designers have done a great job envisioning a beautiful center for us that would really be a good accommodating facility for everyone who wanted to use it. I'm not very good usually at giving advice, but I'll give a, I'll take a wag here, but my only advice would be is in the financial part, is that it is, however the council, if you decide to go forward, would present it in the most positive way, you know, because I think that will be overall the biggest obstacle to get around. Present it to the community as painless as possible and emphasizing, you know, that this is, like has been said before, a future endeavor, I mean, an endeavor that will go into the future, hopefully through the mid part of the century. So, boy, that sounds like a long time, doesn't it? But anyway, that's about all I have to say, other than it's been an honor to work with everyone. I appreciate greatly that I was chosen to work on this on behalf of some of the older citizens of McMinnville, and thank you for your time. It's been a joy.
Marty Purdy?
Yeah, thank you, Meredith. Yeah, yes, being one of the elders as well, Karen, along with Wayne. I've lived in McMinnville for over 30 years. All my kids participated in the youth programs of sports and the various arts. So, yeah, I think the report was very, was very well organized. It was thoughtful, very thorough, and I think for the most part, it was in line with this, with this community needs. My do-worry is what BJ did mention, is that we do have a changing environment over the last three years, unfortunately, and so I think that has to be kind of maybe reconsidered on some of the things that was provided in the report. And also that the facility is going to encompass, like what Dwayne mentioned, that we can't lose sight, aside sport activities, that there are other activities as dance and theater and music that should be somewhat brought into that equation again. My hope is that, you know, this is going to move forward, that it's not going to die, you know, and I think that, as Lisa mentioned, that I think it's important to have continuing community advisory group with the city council. And as Kevin mentioned as well, that it's probably going to have to be a phased project so that it's packaged properly towards the public, because the biggest fear there would be that it does get delayed and we sit here three, four, five years down the road and we haven't done anything. So that's what I have to say. Thanks, Meredith.
Diane Shay?
Thank you, City Council and Mayor, for inviting us tonight. I do have to echo that I'm very grateful to have been a member of MACPAC, and it's been an incredible experience with a lot of really dynamic... an incredible experience with a lot of really dynamic people. And as you can tell from all of the comments tonight, you know, Macpac has the benefit of so many community members coming together with different perspectives. And each of us come, you know, I come to it with so many different perspectives and, and I want to give thoughts on so many different parts of the elements, but I think rather than echoing everything that has been said tonight, I want to come to you with my perspective as a swim family. As you've heard, McMinnville, as we all know, has been known as a swimming powerhouse for decades and decades, but our community aquatic center is really more than just for competition, although that's a vital element. You know, we, we support and serve so many community members through the aquatic center, whether that's the elderly in exercise or baby classes or yoga subboards. I mean, there's, there's a plethora of things and community members that our aquatic center supports and serves. And my worry is that a rec center is going to be built, but that in order to make it work financially, that some of the, the vital components of these facilities might have to be eliminated or given up. For instance, one of the biggest attributes of the community center is our spectator seating. And my worry is something like that could be lost in the next aquatic center, that it could be overlooked. You know, we can really thank Ron Cam is one of our leaders for his long-range vision in building our current aquatic center. So I worry that the new rec center could be built, but that the pool or the community center could potentially end up with maybe less than we have now, just for the sake of building a new building. So in reverse, I guess my greatest hope is that we continue to have a visionary lens on this project. Maybe that means, like others have noted, that there are phases to this project, but really focusing the base has to be one with a long-term focus for our community and a facility that's going to last into the future for the next few decades, like Karen said. It's incredible to think that, but I think this needs to be a visionary project that's going to serve our entire community into the future. So I think the benefit that Macpac has illustrated to me is that our community has a really broad and deep well of members with tremendous passion and knowledge about the intricacies for all of these different components. So my advice for our city council would be to really continue to lean on these community members, especially in the intricacies, so that in the building of this, that none of the key elements are lost. So I thank you and I look forward to the, to the process and envisioning this into the future.
Sarah Tokolsky?
Good evening. Thank you, council and all the players in the process. I really appreciate being a part of it. I'll make it, I'll try to make this short because much has already been mentioned, but my greatest worry is that the project and Macpac's vision will get lost in all of the equally great needs of our community that I know are weighing on council's mind right now. I also worry about the intent behind some of Macpac's decisions and why we made these decisions will be misunderstood by the council and the general public. And to that end, I worry about the messaging and continued communication moving forward to the public, that the intent behind our decisions is properly messaged. And then my greatest hope for this project, in addition to it moving forward in a timely manner, thinking about the environmental impacts and all of the needs we have for our cultural center, in addition to that, my hope is that it will represent all of McMinnville and be welcomed by and welcoming to all of the members in our community that want to access all the different facilities. And my advice is basically to have that lens, we've talked about it, I think many people have talked about looking forward to the future decades and the way that I've mentioned it in previous Macpac meetings is to look at it through a good ancestor lens. And what we want to leave behind, looking forward, keeping that in mind, that we're good ancestors to our, to our future McMinnville community. And then finally, just keep asking good questions all along the process, give pause. We do need to move forward in a timely manner, but it's also important, I think, as we've all learned as Macpac members, to pause and consider and reconsider and ask questions all along the way. We had some good results doing that. So thank you, council, for the opportunity.
Miriam Vargas Corona?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Mayor and council chair, council members, thanks for the opportunity to share some thoughts with you. My greatest concern, if the council decides that we will move forward with the project and build a new community center and aquatic center at the Limpfield location, I would like to see an agreement with Limpfield that prioritizes the use of the facilities so that they can be primarily accessible to residents. I'm concerned that the facilities would get booked up with Limpfield students' exercise or sports programming and that the use of the building would be limited for residents. And I have the same concern for any other community partner that would like to use the facilities for their programs. My greatest hope is that the city is able to find a way to fund the costs of the project while keeping the cost low for residents that want to participate in the programming and the services that will be available. I hope that we're able to find creative ways to front-load the funding for the construction and operations as much as possible so that low-income residents have a high level of accessibility to recreation opportunities. And if we can, I think if we can make this project accessible economically, physically, culturally and linguistically, we will have done a good job of implementing the project with equity in mind. And my advice, you know, I really appreciated learning from a study that the consultants presented to us. We learned a lot about our city's demographics. It was really interesting to review the breakdown of our city in, in the different geography areas. And we looked at the residents' income levels, the age, proximity to services and resources. And if I'm remembering correctly, it also included racial and ethnic diversity. Those were some of the criteria that I'm remembering were presented to us. And that was really helpful for me to think about who is furthest from the opportunity to participate in our recreational services and also in the community engagement process for this project, to plan the project. So I would encourage you to think of our least served and least heard populations as you make decisions moving forward and as you plan community engagement strategies, if we are to seek public support for the project through a bond, for example. I'm thinking of our immigrant neighbors who, for example, may need to learn about what is a bond, if that's not something that they're familiar with, and needing to learn how our households can be affected financially by voting yes to fund a project like this. I think it takes additional and really intentional outreach to engage underrepresented populations and it's essential for our community building process that we allocate sufficient resources for this. Thank you.
I just noticed that a former member of Macpac is on the call. I'm not going to give him the floor, but I just wanted to thank Marilla Martins for all of his help before he moved, so I just wanted to give a quick shout out to him. And our last Macpac member to speak will be Zach Geary. Thank you so much, Zach, for serving as our council representative, but also as a full-fledged member of Macpac. You were very helpful, helping us know what the council was thinking, but also just being another representative of our, of our community. Thanks, Zach.
Thank you, Meredith. I'll use my time real quick to kind of be the transition between Macpac's time and, and council's time. So I'm going to say a few things and then, and then Mr. Mayor, if I could tap you to, to go through council and call down the names of council and have them do their part of the exercise, the two questions, the hope and fear part. And then I'll close that section, if you will, Mr. Mayor, with my hopes and fears. And so I guess you could come back to me. I just want to take this opportunity, so you got, council can do their homework if they haven't already, and stall for a minute. And, and just, just transition and say, you know, I think what started as a year and a half and ended up being nearly two years of work on, on Macpac will easily go down as one of my highlights of, of service of anything I've done. The people you just heard from and the staff that guided us through that truly are exceptional and exemplary of, of what we are as a community and, and I won't be proud of my participation in this when I walk through the halls and take Hiram to swim practice. I will be proud of everyone who just spoke and the staff to help them through that. And that's what I'll think of when we do this really, really cool building that we're all going to be really proud of. So, you know, everyone from the staff who's with us or has moved on in this process and everyone you just heard of, I thank you all for your time and you guys are really great, great stewards of our community and I hope we don't let you down. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll let you transition to council and then I can close that out and then we can hand it back to Meredith to keep us chugging along. Oh, I was muted that whole time. Shoot.
No, you weren't. Thank you, thank you, Zach. And now we are to a point to open it up for the council's discussion and questions, because if we do have questions, this is, this is the, the group to address that to. Again, I'd like to recognize Ken and Jim and, and Heather for their expertises. I mean, from the very get-go, when we started this process, you guys brought a technical process down to a user-friendly process and your experience in showing examples have been so very, so very helpful. So I'm just going to go across the screen and in no particular order for counselors, but Kelly, I have you first and then Chris second, so that you can be prepared.
So fair, Scott. I think my greatest fear is letting you folks down after this monumental effort. I, I'm amazed at all that you've accomplished, serious and very thoughtful questions and digging that has happened over the last two years. I've attended some of your meetings and really enjoyed them. I would like to see this project happen and I will do whatever I can at this point in my life to, to push it forward, truly. We've been handed a lot in the last two years ourselves with a number of decisions about revenue and, and other priorities that we have. But I truly think this would be something that would bring our community together if it's done properly. I was particularly interested in what Miriam had to say about, you know, being able to speak to everybody and, and devoting resources for the communication of this. I think that's extremely important. I like the concept of a phased approach. I've heard Zach speak to several organizations now and I've always been a little bit amused because he just kind of brings that phased approach in near the end. But that's where I'm at. It's my hope that we can do this and, and do it expeditiously. Thank you so much for all your time and effort. You're just amazing and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go to Chris and then council president Drapkin would be next.
First, thank you all. This is a monumental project that you guys worked on and put together for us and, and as is shown by the packet that was given to us. You know, there's, there's, if I, starting with what I worry about, I, I worry about the financial side of this more than anything. You know, we're, we're, as a city, poised to already increased revenue and, and past tax increases across the citizenry and, and not in a small amount, in a rather large amount. I, I see polling that indicates that residents are reticent to continue to be taxed. I recently saw a, a poll of NAV voters that said 60% of them want to see their taxes cut, not increase. So I'm very concerned that the, when we go to the wider population out of the primary users of the facilities and into the wider population who are not the primary users, but will be the large basis of funding needed to, to make this happen, that we're going to hit a roadblock. So that's, that's one very large concern that I have. As I listened to the different people, it was very clear to me that, that this is a good representation of those who use our services and for that, I'm grateful. The, the second part of that concern that I have is we have had a history of developing without finding ways to ensure long-term stability of those things that we develop. Lack of funding for staffing, lack of funding for infrastructure, upkeep and maintenance. And, again, I'm concerned about A, making sure we do that, but B, also, what does that mean price tag-wise going forward for, for our residents? So that, that combination. And one of the things which brings me to the hope of, of this that was encouraging was the concept of phasing this in. Because I do think that offers a possibility of a way to do this and, and still not dump a huge load on our, on our citizenry that results in pushback. So the, I guess that would be, you know, the, the idea of getting rid of buildings that are falling apart and replacing them with buildings that are not falling apart is obviously something that, that gives me great hope. And I guess I'll end again by saying, I really appreciate all this. I'd, I'd hate, I, I would echo Councilor Menke, you know, you guys have put a lot of effort into this. I'd hate to see this all fizzle. But thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Let's go to council president Drapkin, Remy.
Sorry, I started talking without pressing the button. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again, everybody here. My greatest concern, I think, is also the, the financial end of it, but maybe in a similar, but not exactly in the same way that I've heard. So I'll, I'll go ahead and express my financial concerns as well. I think, I was, I was thinking about this recently, about the, the bonding that this, that was, the work that was done in the community for the community center. And, you know, we were probably about a, a town of eight or 10,000 at that time when that work was done. And, you know, that, I, I think Scott and Steve Macy probably knocked on every door in McMinnville to get that bonding done. And so as I heard repeatedly from the Macpac tonight, we hope you'll stay involv, we hope you'll keep us involved as you move forward. I would say in return that if there's any chance of financial success moving forward with this project, we hope that you will stay involved and we hope that, that you will stay partnered with the city because going out for these types of monies will be a tremendous effort and a tremendous communication effort as, as, as you yourselves have already noted repeatedly. And so, the, you know, the, the, the actual price tags on the, on the separate parts of the project, of course, are, are huge and, and, but I don't want to say scary. I think that they need good intentional financial planning. And, you know, with any project like this, when you are making something this mu, that much better, I, I, there's always savings on the backside, right? How much money do we throw away running programming out of facilities that are literally falling down around us? What is the cost of operating in that style? So, some of, and then some of my other thoughts with it, and this also came up in your feedback and I, I just want to reiterate it, is that, that financial planning does include, of course, money for programming and money for staffing, but also I really hope that we're very serious about our long-term and our ongoing maintenance plans. Again, going back, we currently, you know, we, we, we all know we don't fund a facilities manager right now. It's something we, we've talked about, but we haven't done. It's something we've talked about, but we haven't done. And I'm not saying that that position would be necessary in this, but when we're looking at putting in systems of, that are as massive as the systems that are being considered for these facilities, those systems in and of themselves have operating plans and maintenance plans, and they'll be very individualized. And I think we can hopefully keep McMinnville 40 years from now from going through some of these same steps of trying to figure out why buildings that we feel aren't that old or that we've invested in not that long ago are falling down around us. And then, on my hopeful side, you know, I am hopeful that we are able to execute this project in a way that really speaks to the criteria that the MACPAC laid out. So I hope that we are able to keep an eye on environmentalism when we go forward. And I'm curious about how that will be integrated into design and product. And I'm hopeful that we will be able to execute with equity our programming and how we reach out for contractors and how we do the community engagement aspect of all of this project. So I am, I am, I am very impressed with the work that's gone into this. I have a lot more questions, but I wasn't asked for questions, so I will sit on them. I'll put my, I'll hold them inside my pencil in my brain here, and I won't ask them right now. It's a very impressive body of work. Thank you very much for all of your work over the last two years, and I'm excited to see what we can do with this going forward.
Thank you, Remy. Let's move to Sal. Sal?
Thank you, Mayor. I am really grateful as well for your work. I understand how much time and how frustrating sometimes these public processes can be, and this one certainly has taken a lot of time and has actually, from an outside perspective, been one of the best committees I think we've had in the city. So I'm really grateful. My hope is that we will get behind this project as a community. I think that, in my experience, if we have the support of the MACPAC and people willing to go and talk to neighbors and explain what's really trying to be accomplished, I think that a lot of the objections can be overcome. So I think my fear is that, and maybe it's an unfounded fear, but my fear is that people won't stay engaged at the point where we need to really engage the community and talk to the community and sell this project to the community. So I hope that both your group and the City Council Board will get behind this, as I know many, I certainly am, and I think others are on the call. So I, I'm grateful. I'm looking forward to get behind this, and really thank you so much for your work. And Zach, thank you. It's a big addition to your city council duties, and you have a few different committees like this that are a lot of work. So I've noticed it, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everybody from MACPAC who did the heavy lift and putting in all the work to bring us this product. Susan and Jenny sitting through and going through all those applications and interviews to get you guys to form a committee was amazing, and what you guys brought to the table at the end of that process was even better. So thank you for that, and thank you, Zach, for being the council liaison with all those meetings, and you guys pivoting so well through COVID was awesome. That said, one of my major concerns is definitely the sustainable funding mechanism of this going forward. I think, you know, raising it capital-wise to get it built, we could do that as a community a lot easier than we're going to be able to find a sustainable funding mechanism to not just operate it, but maintain it. And I share a lot of Remy's concerns as far as the systems and how in-depth the new buildings are and what they take to maintain and the costs involved with those and the staff involved with those, that you don't see a front-facing, you know, engaged staff member with citizens that they're seeing in ROI. It's more of a long-term return on their dollars that the building isn't prematurely failing or the systems aren't prematurely failing. My other concern would be that you, as MACPAC members, get disenfranchised with us as council and the speed at which this will move forward with what else is already on the agenda and revenue options and fire districting and things like that. It's not that I want this on the back burner by any means, but just that you guys fully understand everything else that is already on the plate of the city and what we have to figure out how to fund. So I don't know what timeframe is on this, but I definitely wouldn't see, you know, a shovel in the ground in the next two years. So it is a long road to get this big, you know, what I would say, a generational facility up off the ground that our citizens can enjoy for, you know, the next few generations. So I just ask that you please stick with us and, you know, stay engaged, and if you are getting disenfranchised, reach out to us, council members, and have that discussion and not just fade into the wind. I guess the only question I would have, which I haven't really, is when BJ Barlow brought up the kind of village aspect of it and how that would work in a phased approach, how much you, as MACPAC members, really dove into that possibility, or if that's something we would have to look at now down the road with COVID and what we've experienced the last couple of years, open spaces and ensuring that we don't have to, or the ability to, you know, have open air flow through a building so we don't have to prematurely close due to another COVID-like incident, you know, 15, 20 years down the road, would definitely be of value in my perspective. And other than that, I just really look forward to, you know, seeing this through and making sure that we can deliver something to our citizens with the help of all of you guys. And thanks again to Zach, Susan, Jenny, and all you MACPAC members.
Thank you, Adam. I'll just give a few comments. When we started the process, I was so impressed with our consultants and their background. And then I saw MACPAC really taking off with very grandiose visions of what we needed and why we needed it. And then I came back and I says, I've been through a number of these financial bonding, whether it be City Hall or not City Hall, but the Civic Center, the police station, and then the transportation bond. But I'll tell you, over the two-year process that you've been working, I've seen the hard lift that you've done, and it's kind of like you've made concessions. You really understand the financial piece, but you also have the vision of what a community like ours needs from recreation, library, and other services. And so I want to commend you for that. I think my greatest fear is financial, and everybody's talked about that. And, you know, if we talk about being phased, you know, do we, can we come up with a plan that has a trap to it, that we can have economies of scale? I'd hate to build a building and then have to go in and tear down walls and connect them and those types of things. And so I think if we phase, we need to phase it from a construction standpoint that keeps the economies of scale where they need to be. I think we need to tell our story a whole lot more to the citizens. We don't do a good job of doing that, and we need to do that. And that's where every one of you can be helpful as we go out and tell the story. I think we need to have more conversations within the community. You know, the surveys that we've done show that people are willing to pay for quality additions in core services that affect their family and make us livable. And I think that's a part of our story. We need to have more talking as a council and as a group of what our citizens are willing to do. I think we look at, you know, we're building for a future, and the future requires more investment, and we've got to be willing to take a look at what it takes to get that investment. My hope is that we do not stray much from the plan. I think you guys have done tremendous lifting, and you bring so much expertise to the table to whittle it down and not make it functional because we don't have the knowledge that you guys have. I think that would be a travesty. I think the other piece is, again, looking at sources for sustainability of staff and maintenance, and we really need to take a look at that from a city perspective. I'll tell you, I had family come in over the Christmas holiday, and guess where our grandkids wanted to go? The swimming pool, okay? And they went, and they had a great time. I talked to my wife, who's back in Utah visiting family this morning, and where did they go this morning? To the local swimming pool. Kids and families love opportunities to be involved in recreation. So that's my hope and dream, and know that there are communities that have done it. So let's take the best examples of how it's been done and move forward. And with that, Zach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good stuff. My hope for the project is that we live up to and deliver on the request and challenge that our community has just asked us for, and that we do the hard work to successfully achieve what is in here and usher in a new era of programming, service delivery, and community activity in McMinnville. My fears, that we don't act boldly and we compromise the integrity of the project, either to hit a lesser or smaller goalpost, or we fail to fuel the operations for good. I fear that we fail to listen and trust the community representatives that we just heard from, as well as from our phenomenal staff and consultant experts, and we trust that process. And I fear that we will allow some of the fetters of our past to govern how we approach and undertake this project. That's my hopes and my fears for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. I'll turn it back over to Meredith, and we've got eight minutes to do our fifth to five. So Meredith, you run us through, tell us what that's all about.
Right. So MACPAC ends our meetings where we put up a fist, meaning zero to five, ranking how the meeting went. Zero means it was terrible, awful, and you wish you had done something else with your time. Five means you were satisfied with the excellent discussion, and then you can do anything in between. We generally leave it up long enough that the staff can kind of get a general sense of how we felt. So on the count of three, one, two, three.
Zach's trying to do 10.
All right.
Some people have a hard time following in stride.
It's a little confusing. Thank you so much for your time. Thanks for everyone. Have a good night. Good luck with your next meeting, City Council.
Thank you, you guys. Okay, I will now adjourn our joint work session, and it is 6:53. And so council and those wanting to join with us, let's see. Claudia, do we stay on this line, or do we have to go to a separate?
Mayor, we have to go to a different Zoom.
Okay, we'll need to go to, in our calendars, to the next Zoom meeting. Thank you all for all your efforts and the discussion this evening. Thanks.
Jim, good work. Good to see you, buddy. Good to see you, buddy.
A Chris. My fourth or fifth attempt, it's still not clear, apparently.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what a street vacation is.
We're vacating a street. There's a request.
Yeah, when I first came on, there was a street vacation. And I was really confused about something expected to happen. But I got there and I, it made me satisfied that what I thought was happening was not happening.
Yes, I mean, here it is.
You know, I should have known what you were talking about, but I just didn't link it to the back end of the question as you asked the question, so.
Know where it is.
It is seven o'clock and we will call to order the City Council meeting for the City of McMinnville, January 25, 2022. And I'll call on Claudia to do the roll call. Claudia?
Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Geary?
Here.
Counselor Minkie?
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Barely here.
Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Counsel President Drabkin?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. Thank you, Claudia. Again, I just want to thank council for their thoughtful preparation and discussion with the MACPAC. And, you know, like I said, I think we made it up to 57 individuals on the call at some point. So just very good discussion. With that being said, our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Adam, could I ask you to lead us through the pledge this evening?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Adam. Our next item on the program this evening is comments from our community members and anyone in the audience that would like to address the council. We'll have that opportunity. You can speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We limit the comments to three minutes and if there are questions, we will assign that to a staff member to get back to the individual. Please indicate your name and your address for the record. Claudia, do we have anyone that's signed up for comments this evening?
No mayor and council, but I did want to make it for the record that we did receive an email from Ellie Gunn and I did mail that to, email that to all council and it will be made part of, part of the packet tomorrow.
Thank you, Claudia. Let's move on to advice and information items. Let's do reports from counselors with their committee assignments and board assignments. And so I'll just go across what I've got. Chris, I have you first this evening.
And I am on a roll this year as I once again have absolutely nothing to report.
Thank you. Remy?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll be meeting, the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission will be meeting tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. on Zoom. All are welcome.
Thank you. Let's go to Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Landscape Review Committee got started with a bang. New member Brian Wicks was present and they did the chair and vice chair election as is appropriate. And the only item on the docket was approval of landscaping over at Lums, the car dealership, pausing for a, excuse me, the little work on landscape, for landscape at the car dealership over there at Lums. Next month, they're going to take back up in full some code amendment, code revision, code language stuff and so hopefully put a pin on that. DEIAC, we heard from, my first meeting as the liaison on that, I attended, we heard from the IS head, Scott Burke, and we discussed training opportunities. We discussed recruitment for two new members, member, general member and as well as a youth liaison member, discussed strategies for the group to stay abreast of council topics, meetings, and discussions as well as discussed creating, I think it was department by department or sort of a way to go around and assess how well the, how well our city is doing on a department by department basis in matters of DEI and then kind of make a score and a bait to establish a baseline that then we can measure improvement on. So that was really exciting. And then on MACPAC, rumor has it, they delivered one banger of a presentation to council recently and you all fell in love with it. So that's my report. Thanks.
And then Zach, we did have a new staff member, a part of the Landscape Review Committee and it's, to have, is it Monica?
Hmm. I remember.
Yes, it's Monica Billado, our new senior planner.
I had to Zoom that one from the highway, so I, forgive me for not catching the name. Thank you.
But it's good that Monica's on board and that we've got staff in that meeting again. So thank you. Let's go to Adam. Adam?
Sorry about the delay on the mute button there.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a banger of a MACPAC presentation, Zach. But as far as what I got for you, Bama-Hadley Airport Commission meetings, we'll have the, March will be our first meeting. YCOM meeting used to be the second Thursday of every month and we as a board decided to move those to have, to be the second Tuesday of every month. So before our next council meeting, I should have an update for you on that. Our January meeting was canceled. Fire District Team, we're still kind of circling the wagons to get polling questions together and I, I think once the chief has threw his emergency staffing over there, we should probably be able to get that up and going. So that's kind of where we're at with Fire District Team. It'll be between us, the city, and McMinnville rule. And yeah, that's what I have for my committee assignments right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Let's go to Kelly.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor. Excuse me. Let's see, all right. YCAP today, a rather long board meeting. Basically, we had a president of the board resign and Carrie Zimberg, who is the vice president, stepped into her role. We've also voted to reduce the YCAP board from nine to seven people and have not yet decided on who would be the new person on. We took two members off that have not been attending at all. We updated our policies and procedures manual for accounting, our finance, and we are working on strategic planning and there will be a major board meeting on that in April. And we're sticking to our, our last change in bylaws where we're going now to quarterly meetings. I just wanted to mention, just for the heck of it, I signed up for a DEI meeting with the League of Oregon Cities today and I actually was impressed. McMinnville, I think, is one of the few communities that actually has had a DEI committee in, in action for the last year, so we are to be congratulated. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Okay, just a couple of things really quickly for council of governments. Once again, our annual meeting is coming up February 16th from 6:00 to 7:30 on Zoom. Second, we've had a lot of requests at the COG for grant administration assistance from cities ranging in size from McMinnville to some of the smaller cities in the region. And we haven't really had the, we don't really have the capacity to meet the demand. So we have gone to the legislature and requested grant funding to help facilitate that, which it looks pretty optimistic. They actually asked us to go to the other five councils of government and work up a number to get grant assistance to basically all the councils of government in the state to help facilitate this, the efficient spending and management of the ARPA funds at the local government level. So pretty excited about that opportunity. The only other item of business, we submitted a letter in coordination with the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde opposing an off reservation casino and expansion of casino, casinos in southern Oregon. So just wanted to note that for the record and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. I'm just going to update a couple of things tonight for you. We did hold our Third Street Advisory Committee earlier, the end of last week and this was our second meeting when we're talking about parking sidewalks, what we want the Third Street scape to look like. And we narrowed it down to four options and initially, and now we're down to two options that we're going to be looking at with further discussion. But it was a healthy, these are two hour meetings and anyone that would like to be a part of that, just feel free to come on and observe and we, you can even give comments as a, as a guest. We give opportunities for that, but a good discussion with a lot of the right players around the table. We had an opportunity last Thursday to meet with the Newburgh-Dundee bypass and we had an update on phases 2A, phases 2B, 2A being the intersection at 219 and the bypass and 2B going from 219 all the way up to Rex Hill. We have been given some direction from ODOT that there are some additional grants that may be available and individuals feel like, feel like that may be an opportunity for us so we're moving forward. We were going to be going to the OTC on Thursday and we didn't take the normal group. I wasn't a part of that because we put in front of them Mayor Rick Rogers because of the impact in Newburgh, but knowing that we may be going a different direction and not going for some of the highway dollars that come through the fast and infra grant programs. So we now have renewed efforts and focus of where we're going to be going from that perspective. Just two other things that I want to update. Just for your information, we received from Peter Hofstadter that he has resigned from the Budget Committee and, and so we didn't, we have a full schedule tonight and we're going to be putting it on the agenda in our first week in February. Sherri Haas, we're going to bring Sherri's name back to you to be on the Budget Committee and she's accepted that. So we'll get a, we'll get an authorization from the council to do that. But with Peter leaving, we're also going to have another opening and first meeting in February, we'll bring Victoria Ernst's name back to you. I just wanted to let you know that. And with Peter leaving, there's an opening on the Audit Committee and we've, we've approached Meredith Maxfield, who we just heard from, to serve on our Audit Committee and she's accepted from that perspective. The last thing that I would just have, a follow up for each of us. We have done a poll with council about meeting in person and we had, we had five responses from that, two that wanted to meet in person and three that did not want to meet in person. We have updated the facilities in the civic center now. Scott Burke was able to get the equipment fixed. There wasn't, there wasn't a problem with the supply chain and so the things that we were looking for have come in. And so I think what we'll do is take a look every couple of months and see if we want to meet together again and do a poll and then move forward from that perspective. And we would like to have everyone participate in, in those polls as they come around. So with that, the only other thing that, well, let's, let's move over to department. Well, Sal, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a note that I'd neglected to mention that the next Oregon Transportation Committee meeting is going to be February 17th. And at the first OTC meeting that the mayor mentioned, I think they had about 20 people that participated and 15 of them came from the Willamette Valley to advocate for projects, including the bypass. I've really appreciated Mayor Hill's leadership overall on that, even though he wasn't in that meeting. But we're looking for more people to advocate for Willamette Valley projects for that meeting on the 17th. So if anybody is interested in attending, you can either reach out to me directly. Most of the materials that are needed to testify were sent out by the Council of Governments about a week ago, so you should have that in your email, but we could definitely use some additional support. Thanks.
Thank you, Sal. And again, I'm sure the bypass committee will have representation from there as will MWAC because we do have a lot of projects in the rural area. Let's go over to department heads. And so I will, I've got Amanda, I've got you first.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to quickly clarify that Sherri Haas was approved for the Budget Committee at the last meeting, but yes, the other appointee will be moving forward at the next meeting and that's all I have to report. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for keeping me straight. Let's go to Heather Richards.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things that I wanted to report to the council. We did have a bill we submitted to the Housing Committee on the House side for this current legislative session. The House Committee is moving that forward. It's now been assigned a bill number. It's House Bill 4065. It's a bill to establish a pilot program in McMinnville for inclusionary zoning for affordable housing. So as you see that bill come along, please support it.
If I could, if I could just, you did a phenomenal job in your presentation to that, the House Subcommittee on Affordable Housing. Thank you for your preparation and how you can take complex things and make them very specific to our needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to share that if you live near Organic Valley, you've probably have had some pounding in your head for the last couple of months and I wanted to share what was going on there. So Organic Valley is establishing their new build there, so their, their new construction project and they're driving pilings into the ground. Those pilings are going to be their future foundation for their construction project because the equipment inside it is so, so heavy and the soils on that land needed a lot more structural support. So we are, appreciate the patience of people who live around there and I promise you, there is an end to it in sight. But it's a very interesting project for anybody who likes very large construction projects and it's, has a lot of complexities and so our team is enjoying working with their team on putting it together. We certainly appreciate their investment in our community. And then lastly, I wanted to share, we are working through staffing transition in the Planning Department. We are onboarding a couple of new staff right now and we're interviewing for two other positions. I'm usually, I pride myself on our team's responsiveness. We try to get back to people within 24 hours. We are not achieving that right now because of our staffing transitions. I want to let everyone know, we, we are aware of, we're getting a lot of inquiries from email and phone calls. We're aware of them, we're responding to them, but it may take us a little longer than it has in the past and we are doing our best to catch up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Chief Leipert, Rich?
Mr. Mayor and council, just an update on our emergency staffing measures. We are seeing a light at the end of the tunnel. We have a meeting later this week, late this week with the union to figure out the best rollback process to roll back to our original staffing three shifts. My guess is it'll probably be the end of the first week of February or early in the second week of February when we make that move. Right now, we originally went to emergency staffing. We had 17 standing team members still working. We're now at 29 out of 34. We still have some, three injuries that are going to be long-term injuries that are out, but three of our five applicants are in the vacant positions. We have two are scheduled to start the first week of February. So we're, all of our original vacancies will be filled by the first week of February and everyone but our three folks that are workers comp will be back in pocket. So we're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel and they're hanging in there. Their 48s are long, but they're, they're holding their own. So thank you for your support.
And share our thanks with the group. We, we know lots are going, a lot is going on and, and COVID has just continued to take a bit of a... take a bit of a, a piece of our staffing from that perspective, so. Let's go to Finance, Jennifer.
Good evening, everyone. I have nothing to report tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Kylie?
Good evening. Just a couple of things tonight. I want to remind the Council of our City Manager's Performance Evaluation, which is due on January 31st. I already sent an Aggie email, so this is your final reminder. I'll try to not bug you about it anymore, but please get those in. It is very helpful to construct a full evaluation with everyone's participation, so I encourage you to get that done by Monday. If you're not able to do that, let me know, and I'll see if we can work out an alternative deadline for you. And then I also just want to give a, a big shout out to all of our hiring managers and interview panelists. We've been recruiting like crazy, and our staff are doing an awesome job of evaluating candidates and helping me with the recruitment process. So just a shout out to our team.
Thank you, Kylie. Let's go to Public Works, Ann.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing new to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Susan.
I just want to say thank you for that awesome conversation and work session with MACPAC. Jenny and I just got an email from this consultant team saying they've attended a lot of city council meetings across the country, and that was one of the most thoughtful meetings that they have experienced. So, thank you to all of you. It was inspiring to us, and we really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Let's go to Jenny.
As with most of the MACPAC meetings, yeah, what Susan said. And yeah, I was just, thank you so much for your time and attention there, and of course, the MACPAC team was amazing, or the MACPAC Committee. We have a couple of openings at the library. Getting some applications in, which I'm pleased to see, given what I've heard about the hiring climate. We've got a couple of, couple of good, good applications already, and hopefully we'll get more in the next week or so.
Thank you, Jenny. Chief Scales, Matt?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A couple of notes. One, let staff know, our executive team know that Captain Rhonda Jasco, she's going to be retiring March 1st. So we have an internal recruitment that's going to be opened up, I believe, closer to the end of the week, and we'll identify an interim captain with the hopes of onboarding a permanent replacement through a hiring process, probably sometime after the first of the fiscal year, so some moving parts there, but it'll be some opportunity for our staff to get some experience if they want to apply for the full-time position. Some hiring updates, a couple conditional job offers out right now for lateral applicants, ones from North Dakota, ones from central Oregon, so we're excited about that. Have some other recruit applications or interviews coming up next week, so that's good. As a reminder, we had three openings, so we're looking pretty good right now with that. In the, in the process of starting re-accreditation through the Oregon Accreditation Alliance, and Captain Simons is leading that charge. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't also note that we had upwards, I think we had eight or nine people out with COVID over the last week or so, but we, I think we're on the backside of it, at least right now. We haven't had any new infections, but steady as she goes, we're looking okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
And Matt, I know you're down people. Could you just update us with the camping program for the week? I know we didn't get a report out, but if you could just update the counselors, because I know we're still getting a few phone calls.
Yeah, okay. One of the reasons you didn't get anything, because one of the officers that provides that information to me was a COVID casualty. But I do know this week, one of our day shift teams went over to the 12th and Railroad, I believe, tracks that Alpine area, and they were with Public Works, and they did a hefty lift of a cleanup. I can send you some pictures of the before and after. Looking forward to tonight discussing that a little bit more. I know that's on our agenda, but things continue to sort of be status quo, and tonight, I think will probably shed some light on why there hasn't been a great deal of movement in that realm, so to speak. So, that's all I have.
Understand. Thank you, Matt. Have I missed any of the executive team? If not, let's go to Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. Just one quick highlight from my week. This week I was invited to join the ICMA Student Chapter at Portland State University for a noon coffee talk. We didn't actually have coffee, but we did talk. We were also joined by some members of the Pepperdine ICMA Student Chapter. So it was nice to see some West Coast students who are contemplating careers in local government, and I gave them what I thought were some, hopefully useful tips as they move out of their academic career and into the world of work. I did emphasize there are lots of opportunities. And then yesterday evening, after dinner, my wife got a Facebook post from a friend from down in Springfield, who we've known for a long time, and the young man who convened the meeting was actually her son, who has a different last name, so I didn't make the connection. So he followed up today and said, hey, you know my mom? I said, yeah, I do. So anyway, that's all I have to report tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, let's go to the Consent Agenda. And the Consent Agenda this evening considers Resolution 2022-3, a resolution approving code compliance liens on properties to recover unpaid corrective action cost and civil penalty citations. Does anybody want to remove anything off of the Consent Agenda and place on the regular agenda this evening? Seeing none, then I'll take a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. So moved.
Seconded.
Removed by Kelly and seconded by Zach. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Consent Agenda passes unanimously six to zero this evening. That takes us to our resolutions this evening, and our first resolution for consideration is Resolution Number 2022-5, a resolution initiating a proceeding and setting a date and time for a public hearing to vacate a portion of Southeast Clay Street, RV 1-21. And so we'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Ann. Go ahead and present.
Good evening again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members. I'll refer you to the staff report included in the packet and the proposed resolution and application materials. We received a petition related to the proposed vacation of a portion of Southeast Clay Street. You can see a map of that in the packet. The application was deemed complete with the required signatures provided with the application. The staff report includes the proposed schedule for the process, which assuming the Council adopts the resolution this evening, would set a hearing date of March 8th at 7:00 PM. And the city will notify the affected utilities and interested parties to receive feedback before the hearing. And so at that time, we'll have all of the feedback from utility providers and, and anyone else that had any comments, as well as internal staff. So unless there are any questions, staff would recommend to adopt the resolution as presented.
Any questions for Ann on the, the vacating the portion of Southeast Clay Street? Very complete packet. Go ahead, Zach.
Thanks. I, I think I know the answer, but it's worth the clarification. If they are granted the vacation request, and they then improve, if they improve the property, are the sort of standards for street and sidewalks then not, they don't exist anymore? We don't have those attached to it? Is that correct? So they're, so they're, it's just sort of not a thing anymore? If that?
It would not, Ryan, it would be, it would not become, would not be city-owned property any longer. It would not be right-of-way any longer.
Okay, cool. Just making sure.
Okay.
That's all, that's all I got. Thanks.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-5.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded. I'll take Adams on that. Any further discussion? Those in favor may signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Resolution 2022-5 passes unanimously six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Next up is consideration for Resolution Number 2022-6, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and making supplemental appropriations via intra-fund transfers and contingencies transfers. And so we'll call on Jennifer to present. Jennifer?
Yeah, good evening, everyone, and we'll see if folks are going to be fighting to, to second this motion once we get through it. It's, there, there's a few items here. So we did a mid-year review in November, staff did, just because of the austerity budget and just wanting to make sure we were on track still. And so we did find a couple of things that had been missed, and also that, you know, there's new conditions and we need to add some more appropriations. So the first item is the Public Affairs staffer moved from being a public works-centric role to one that is citywide. And this, oh, I should note, the staff report regarding this starts on page 38 of your packet, if, if you want to try to find that. So anyways, so by moving her out of public works focus to a citywide role, there were changes in how that salary was allocated, as well as transfers associated with it. So that's the first item. The second item was I, I missed budgeting for lobbying fees, and actually, I made an error here on the $35,000. It actually should be 18, because we split this with transportation. So David Renshaw, if you're on the call, thank you, Eagle Eye, he noticed this. So I've got an amended appropriation that makes that, it's a $17,000 difference that would incorporate that difference if you choose to pass the resolution. Then there's the lighting of the sequoia tree, and the estimate on that is $30,000. Then there were a couple of, we decided because there had been discussion of the towing of vehicles and that it hadn't been budgeted in the police department's budget, we thought it would be good to just, using this vehicle, go ahead and incorporate that into a line item, so that's $12,500. Then the next are, there are a couple of, well, there's a series of items. So in Finance, we've had turnover, and so we anticipate there's going to be about $15,000 worth of higher costs due to that personnel change. Also, the contract for the work around the city services fee, that was not contemplated at the time of the budget, so that's $30,000 added. In Administration, there is a budgeted halftime position for half of the year to support HR principally, and given what's just going on with our hiring needs and everything that Kylie is juggling with HR, it's really clear that we need a full-time support, and the differential there is $18,000. Then the Administration, oh, in the staff report, sorry, I didn't complete the sentence, there's $22,000 that we need to increase the, the contract with our municipal, municipal court, city attorney. And then Parks and Recreation, there were a couple of, I think it was discussed earlier at the Aquatic Center, both the boiler failed and the compressor module failed in their AC unit, so both of those things had to be paid for this fiscal year. So that wraps up the list of items that are in the supplemental budget, and I can share with you if, if you would like the updated spreadsheet that shows the difference in numbers, if people want to see that. Or if people have any questions, I'm happy to field what I can.
Let's go ahead and open it up for any questions of Jennifer and her staff. Seeing none, then.
Kelly, just.
Okay, Kelly.
I just have one question, and maybe you talked about it, but I honestly didn't see it when I was reading through this. You show a mid-year amendment for administration of $184,763, and I'm pretty sure none of the items you've mentioned add up to that, so could you give me an idea what the rest of it is?
Well, it's, it's the total, the primary piece of that is the cost of the Public Affairs staffer's salary for 10 months, moving out of Public Works into, into the admin department so she can be a citywide resource. And so I think in the staff report, I want to say it's $70,000 plus, her total. Let me get that back in front of me. Well, I'm, I'm having computer problems and can't get it.
That's okay. I think I get what happened now. I think I understand why I was.
Yeah, Jennifer, it was 77,500.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, thanks for the save.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I guess, Jennifer, I'm sorry, this is Sal. Can you help me to understand, so there's, it's basically an inter-agency transfer for that position, so it's not an actual increase? It's just shifting dollars from one budget to another? Or if it is an increase, why is there an increase if the staff position hasn't changed? Have they gotten more hours or something?
No, it's, it's actually, there are two components of this. So when she was working primarily for Public Works, most of her salary was being paid for out of the wastewater fund, and a little bit out of street and transportation. And when the focus of her job shifted about two months into the year, she ended up, her position got moved to the Administration Department, and then we reran all of the support transfers. So there were some increases and decreases, and that's why I went ahead and put that little grid together for the, the way the transfers shifted around. But her, her position did not change the actual number of dollars, but it impacted how much the general fund was paying, was contributing, and that's why the appropriation in the general fund increases.
Got it. And so then, is there no additional action to, needed to reflect the additional savings in the, in the original sources of, of revenue for that position?
No, it's, it's not required, and I, I could have reduced the wastewater and all the other funds, but I just, I didn't do the math there, because it was just more work, and I was trying to get through it.
It, it doesn't change anything, though. The money's still there, it's, it's not spending down, it's just taking it out of one pot and moving it to another. Is that right?
Exactly. Yes, her, it's the same person at the same salary level, it's just essentially the general fund is paying more, a higher proportion of her salary than had been happening before.
Thank you. And then some of the items in here seem to be like, you know, kind of contingency costs that will come up from time to time for maintenance, for example. I saw one of them was like a compressor or something for that.
Correct.
Yeah. So is, is that the kind of thing that we don't really, in the, in the main budgeting process, we, we, we just really don't kind of build in those, those types of contingencies? You just sort of, we have a strategic reserve, and the money just comes out of the strategic reserve as, as these problems come up? Is that our approach?
Actually, I mean, the money is held technically in a conti- in a contingency line as a category in the budget. And because, as you will recall, we were in kind of austerity measures when we were trying to balance the budget last year. So the reason why I'm going ahead and making these supplemental budgets mid-year as opposed to waiting till the end of the year is many of, most of these budgets, particularly in the general fund, are pretty tight and very fine. And so it's predictable that if we don't go ahead and do it now, we'd have to do it at year end. So it just, since I already knew about it, it felt more transparent to bring it up, these larger ticket items now as opposed to waiting. Does that help or answer your question?
Totally. Thank you so much, Jennifer.
Sure, you bet.
Go ahead, Jeff.
And just to add a little bit more to that answer, we typically, for most of our facilities, budget pretty minimal upkeep and maintenance. And sometimes these sort of things break and can be handled in the amount that's budgeted. And sometimes they exceeded, these happen to be too, you know, larger expenses and beyond kind of the annual maintenance that was budgeted for the facility.
Thanks, Jeff. And thank you as well for going back through the chart. I didn't see it the first time I read through the packet, but I see it now. So thanks, Jennifer, for that patient explanation.
Oh, sure, you bet.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2022-06.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, there was like someone rushing to get second. But.
Go ahead.
But I want to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Amanda, because I have changed by $17,000, the Exhibit A that goes with the resolution, should there be some verbiage acknowledging that?
So I'll change that then, if this is correct, Amanda. We're approving Resolution number 2022-6 with the stated amendment.
So, yeah, can you just, for the record, Jennifer, just once again, say what the change is? And then if we could get Counselor Peralta, and I think it was Counselor Gary who seconded to confirm that the motion with the amendment, that they still want to make the motion and second it.
Okay. Yeah, the specific change is the mid-year adjustment to the administration department of the general fund. The supplemental appropriation will be $17,000 less than what the number is in the packet. The new supplemental number will be $1,611,387. And in addition, we will need $17,000 less in contingency transfer. And so therefore, the supplemental contingency number will become $793,578.
Amanda, would you care to put that into a motion?
So Counselor Peralta, you can just say that you move to approve Resolution 2022-06 as amended, reflected by the finance director.
Thank you. I move this resolution as amended by the finance director.
And then Zach, you'll second it?
I do.
Less enthusiastically.
So we have Resolution number 2022-06 that was moved by Sal and seconded by Zach. Any further counsel discussion? Okay, I'm going to ask those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Resolution number 2022-06 passes unanimously six to zero. Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have on the docket Resolution number 2022-07, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 and making supplemental appropriations. And so I'm going to turn this over to both Jennifer and Kylie to present. Go ahead.
Great, thanks and apologies for the error in the other. But we can blame the eagle eyes of David Renshaw. So I have shared screen. We're going to run through a PowerPoint on this just to help move us through the points. So is that visible for folks?
It is.
Oh, great. So this supplemental appropriation is designed as an investment in our workforce. And effectively, what we're doing or what we're proposing is that counsel make a much more substantial implementation of the first year of the classification and compensation study in the current fiscal year. And that was the study that was associated with looking at general services employees, folks who aren't members at the bargaining units. So what you did appropriate in the FY 21-22 budget was a limited implementation of, we estimated about $45,000 plus an upcharge for around 35% in additional payroll tax purse, that kind of thing. And what that would have done is look for the employees that are currently, when they get placed in their new ranges, that their current jobs were actually below the bottom of those ranges. So it was a very minimal implementation to move those folks onto the first step of the new ranges. So that's what we proposed. And then I think, yeah, I think Kylie will take over from here, talking about the background.
Yeah, so it's been a while since we've presented the council with information on this project. So I want to kind of jog your memories a little bit about where we've been and give some context into our proposal and recommendation. So as you recall, the city engaged in a consulting agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services, Inc. to review our classification plan and our compensation plan. We started that project with a full review of our employee classifications. Employees were involved in that project from the get-go. They first started with completing questionnaires related to their work that they do at the city. They also went through a series of interviews with our consultant to provide some more nuanced information to the work that they do. There was also significant HR feedback in the process and then work with our managers as well. The consultants provided us with a recommendation on the changes to our classifications, which is just about the job descriptions themselves and creating a structure to those classifications. Employees looked at those, reviewed them, and then either gave it a thumbs up or filed an appeal if there were things that they thought that our consultant didn't get right in their analysis. Now, we had quite a few appeals, however, many of them were minor. And only about 13 or 14 will result in a more in-depth review of those classifications. Job classifications were sorted primarily based on the decision-making authority associated with each position. So as you could see, maybe Jeff would have the highest decision-making authority at the city, while mine would be less than that. And so we'd look at those types of decisions an employee would be responsible for making and use that as a primary way to sort positions into a structure. We also looked at things, some secondary characteristics, like complexity of work, the type of training or experience that's required to do the job, and also the scope of supervision. And all of those factors came together to place a structure over our classifications. You can't do a compensation update without getting your classification structure right. So that was the first step in this project. Our consultants also did a compensation plan review where they looked at salary information through a series of salary surveys for key positions in the organization. And then they applied that throughout the classification structure. A change in the project, because it's taken us some time to implement, and a lot of that is due to some budget challenges that we had had, is we requested that they update the salary data to be effective for July 1 of 2021. So we adjusted those initial salary recommendations, and they increased slightly to be to the appropriate time of year. What we learned from our consultants is that our salary bands in the city of McMinnville are significantly more narrow than our counterparts in other jurisdictions and in the larger labor market. They recommended that we expand our ranges so that entry level and individual contributor positions have a 30% spread on their salary band. And then positions for more advanced or technical individual contributors and managers would then have a 50% spread on their salary bands. So those are significantly wider than what we have right now. For a little bit of context, our current salary bands have six steps in them. So if an employee has worked for the city for six years, they would top out at that salary step at the step F. And the only additional increases that they may see would be due to a cost of living adjustment. What we also learned is that the top of our current ranges are actually quite competitive within the market, meaning that they're about the midpoint of what a full salary range would be. So while our ranges don't extend as high as many other organizations do, the top of our scale is about midpoint with where we would want to be in the market, and that's considered a competitive wage. We reviewed their recommendations, and we determined five different options that we could use to implement these changes. And as Jennifer mentioned, we had this slide up on your screen is what we initially had proposed when we were building this current year's budget. We now have new information about our beginning fund balance this year that's going to help us make a more aggressive recommendation, I guess. And I'll guess I'll kind of talk about that now. So what we're hoping to do is except for a very small number of employees whose current salaries exceed the top of the new range. Those employees would see their salaries frozen until the range has caught up with them. But we're proposing that effective July 1 of 2021, so retroactively, we would move each affected employee to a step on the new salary range based on a couple of different factors, primarily their years of service in their current position. If their years of service in their current position, we don't want to exceed, I'm sorry, I'm a little jumbled here. We don't want to exceed the midpoint on the range, but we also don't want to see an employee have a decrease in compensation. We also are proposing that we add a step for any employee who did not or who would not have seen an increase of 2% or more. And we're doing this for a couple of different reasons, and I'll kind of go into more detail about that in the coming slides. But our current recommendation and the one that we would like the council to consider tonight is to move people to the new step on the range, retroactively to July 1, which would ensure a minimum 2% increase for our employees. The cost of this is significantly more than what we had initially planned on. However, we have a beginning fund balance that supports this recommendation. Okay, next slide, Jennifer. We're kind of jumping the gun a little bit. So I have a couple of reasons that I want to talk with the council about, about why we want to make this investment in our employees now. The first one is that we need to focus on our employee relations. This recommendation is for our nonrepresented employees. Those are employees who do not have a collective bargaining agreement and aren't represented by a labor union. Two bargaining units, the police union and the fire union, have negotiated increases for cost of living through their bargaining process. And both of those bargaining units saw a 2% increase effective July 1 as a cost of living adjustment. Our nonrepresented employees did not see that this year as we froze our salaries when we were working on our budget and utilizing some austerity measures in that. So this recommendation helps promote equity between our nonrepresented employees and those folks that are represented by a labor union. Additionally, we've had a really tough year morale-wise, and it's a lot of it's been tied to our budget. Besides having a reduction in many department budgets, which impacted things like training, ability for additional education, those types of things, employees have been, they've had to do their same level of work, for the most part, with a reduction in service due to our furlough program. So it's just been a very challenging year for our general service staff that have been impacted by our budget reductions and our furloughs. Additionally, we've had significant turnover in our general service, nonrepresented positions. Between, and in the staff report, I refer to this, 2019 was, I think, our last normal calendar year before COVID started. So that's a baseline that I'm working off of here. Between the 2019 numbers and the most recent 12 months, we've seen a 10% increase in turnover. Those are voluntary resignations and retirements. And that's very significant here. We only have about 100 employees in this category, and that's a lot of people to see leave our organization. And though folks are leaving for a variety of reasons, compensation comes up as one of them frequently when I conduct an exit interview. The next reason that I want to, that we want to use to explain our recommendation and give you the rationale behind it, as you're aware, is it's a really tough recruitment environment, and our lack of competitive salaries is hurting our ability to fill vacancies. I included a few examples in the staff report, but I'll call them out here specifically. So our city engineer position, formerly an engineering services manager, we've updated the job a little bit. It's roughly between $25,000 and $55,000 a year below other cities. That is a significant difference in compensation, and it hurts our ability to recruit. We also have another example with our court supervisor. And depending on the city that you look at, we're about either $11,000 below to $24,000 below. And it's difficult for us to achieve these robust, broad applicant pools when we don't have compensation that attracts people to our organization. Local governments are very good in their recruitment practices of posting salary ranges because you're not going to go for a job that doesn't pay you enough to maintain your lifestyle or to pay your bills or your student loans. Maybe not right now, those are on hold, but all your other things. And so having those salary ranges posted gives candidates the opportunity to make a decision whether they want to apply or not. When we're not competitive, it's really hurting our ability to get broad, diverse applicant pools of qualified candidates to make those decisions. And our benefits and our perks don't tend to make up for significant differences like I just described. We also had previous philosophies around compensation here at the city. Where working for the city is a noble, you know, a noble thing to do. And yes, it is, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be paying our employees fair and competitive wages. We need to be aligning our pay with the market so that we can recruit and retain our employees. And then the third reason that we're making this recommendation is it is specifically called out in our strategic plan. MacTown 2032 calls for investment in our city's workforce, and it also calls specifically for competitive and equitable compensation. So between employee relations and recruitment and retention and our strategic plan, we really believe that this is a recommendation that the council should consider. Additionally, I think we can go to the next slide now, Jennifer. Our beginning fund balance is significantly higher than we had anticipated this year. So we have the funding available to make this change happen. And it would be an excellent example of doing right by our staff if we could make this change. And then I think next slide. And so Jennifer might pop in on this one a little bit more. I was thinking about this presentation, and she's the numbers gal, and I'm the people gal. So I don't know if I could answer any questions you may have about this slide. But here you'll see an analysis of our recommendation based on the different departments and the different funds that are impacted. I don't know if anybody has any questions on this slide before we move on to some other ones.
So just one thing to point out, it was interesting. I thought that the numbers ended up being really consistent with. So this is relative our personnel appropriation, not the total appropriation. So it's a 2% increase in wages across the various funds and 2% also for general fund, which is, you know, consistent with the COLAs that were offered the bargaining. across the various funds and 2% also for general fund, which is, you know, consistent with the COLAs that were offered the bargaining units. And you also, if you dig into the numbers, you can see not every department fared the same. So the standout is the library. We have apparently been really off norm in terms of compensation in particular for the folks who worked at the library. And then you, you see a little bit more variation in different departments.
Jennifer, a question that I, I would have is this that's before us is kind of like a one-time adjustment to bring us into a more appropriate grade and compensation, is that correct?
That's, that's the way I think of this. This implementation, it's, it's a one, it's a one-time cost, the year that you're making the shift. And so that's going to have to happen at some point.
Yeah.
And so because of the way the numbers looked as we were building the budget, you know, nine months ago now, it just, it was not attainable for us to, to make the implementation that we frankly thought was the right thing to do. But we just, we sim, there was no way to do that.
Right.
But now that, now that the numbers have closed and we could see where, where the beginning fund balances come in. I, it was really awesome to see that 98% of these costs can be offset directly by higher beginning fund balances in each of the funds that are listed. And it also will not zero out those gains. There, each of the funds will still have some better showing relative to, relative what we anticipated. So, so that's why I'm comfortable from a, from a numbers person with this one-time investment because we do have what is effectively one-time revenue to match with it.
Thank you. And then Kylie, I have a question for you when it comes to our, our grades. And you'd indicated as we go to this, we will just, we will still have a sixth grade step?
We actually won't. We'll have more steps in our salary ranges. So employees would be able to have a merit increase for more years than they currently do.
Yeah, because I, I brought this up a number of times where, you know, those grade steps were just longevity in a job and had nothing to do with performance. And it sounds like now we're going to a more normal where we have a, a, a low midpoint and high. And you're expected, if you're fulfilling your responsibility at a expected level, you could be at midpoint. And it's reserved to get higher increases if you're doing performance that's well up and above, always being held back by that max. So that's where we're headed.
Yeah, I think, I think we're speaking the same language on that one. Not to go off track, but we don't have a fantastic performance management system yet. That's something that's on HR's list to do. But this, this structure will set us up to take that on in a much better way. And it also just, it provides more earning potential in these positions and is a great retention tool for the city.
Well, I, I think that's so wise because what it does is it, it, we evaluate our employees on a consistent basis and, and salary is a, a, a company now that performance. And, and I think, you know, one of our greatest liability is, is not doing annual reviews appropriately and treating everyone equitably and having a standard. And I think if we go to this grading system or low, medium and high, it gives us so much more flexible, flexibility to treat our employees the right way, but also help them be the best they can be by being, having annual reviews. And I, I hope that makes sense, but.
It does. And you'll be excited to see some updates as we go through the budget process. There's some tools to help us get that done more consistently that we'll be proposing.
Thank you, because that's been an ongoing concern that I, I've had for many years. The difference between working in the private sector and for government, I just could never follow that logic. And so this, that approaches it. So thank you.
Fantastic. Jennifer, do you want to touch on this slide a little bit?
Yeah. So, so I just wanted to call out. It's similar to what a, a little bit of the discussion around the public affairs is when if you, if you make any of these changes, whether it's the staff proposal or any of the alternatives that we'll, we'll put before you in, in a, in two shakes. They will have some tails with the transfers. And so just, that's part of it. It's very small dollars, but that's incorporated in your, in the, in the budget resolution, the supplemental. So, so there are alternative ways that we could handle it. And the reason why we went ahead and ran some numbers for you is we do have some urgency in terms of timing on this decision. We really want, if it's possible, to make a choice about what we're doing with the, with the class and compensation study because we're at a critical moment in developing next year's budget. And we, we really, really need to understand how and when we are moving employees into those new salary ranges and their steps within each range. So, so we are very hopeful that we've provided enough information and potential alternative ways to implement that will allow you all to, to make a choice this evening. That would be meaningful for the budget process for next year. So. So here's the list of the alternatives.
And I can speak to these alternatives a little bit. So the, the primary recommendation is the one that we have shared is to move folks into the recommended step on the new range, ensuring a minimum of a 2% increase to their salaries and having that be effective July one of 2021, so it'd be retroactive. And the first alternative is to do that very same thing, but change the implementation date from July one to January one. So the cost would decrease a little bit and it would go down to $280,000. And the primary recommendation that we're hoping the council will move on is more, I believe it's 56, $560,000.
Yeah, citywide.
Citywide. Um, alternative B is slightly different. So we would be retroactively issuing these changes to compensation back to July one, but would not be ensuring a minimum increase of 2% to our employees. There are some who would see increases, you know, much larger, particularly some folks in the library, as we mentioned earlier. But some would see, you know, less than a 1% adjustment to their salary. And alternative B has a cost associated with it of approximately $450,000. Alternative C would be doing what I just explained, but having that be effective on January one, so just half, half of that. And we believe that that estimated cost is closer to $315,000. And then alternative D is what we primarily proposed in the budget for this year, which is approximately $80,000 when we include the cost of payroll taxes and PERS contributions. And so there are different costs associated with these alternatives. And, and we still enthusiastically recommend the first recommendation that ensures at least a 2% increase for staff and making that effective July one of 2021. And with that, we have some more analysis of the alternatives if you care to look at those two.
Yeah. So, so these, both of these, there are two more graphs in the presentation and both of these were in the packet. So, so the first one shows alternative A, B, C and D that Kylie just very ably described and their cost to the general fund respectively, and their costs overall to the organization. So these would, if you preferred one of these alternatives, this would be the, the supplemental budget impact in appropriations. Then, so these are in dollars and here's by percentage. So you can see that converted with, if you went with alternative A, it, a relative personnel cost before the supplemental budget, it would be an increase of 1.3% of personnel and then, you know, subsequent. So, so this is all in your packet. And if people have questions about this or the numbers, anything about the, the reasoning behind this, we're both happy to take questions. And I don't know, Jeff, I'll, I'll, I'll get rid of the slideshow. Jeff, do you, do you want to mention anything or?
Oh.
And, and I see Amanda's hand is up maybe on a technical issue.
So go ahead, Amanda.
Yeah, before we begin, I think Counselor Gary wanted to recuse himself from the discussion. So I'm going to give him the opportunity to do that.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I was trying to jump in, but you guys were on it with that presentation. Yes, I, you know, as I disclosed during the budget cycles, my wife is a employee, my lovely wife is an employee for the city of McMinnville. And while it doesn't need me to recuse myself from just the overall budget process, I find it more appropriate to recuse myself from the following discussion and, and judgment. So I will be checking out. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach. Okay, Jeff.
So Kylie, can you just make a quick note about how this process and recommendation has also helped us ensure compliance with Oregon's Equal Pay Act, please?
Definitely. So a few years back, the state of Oregon passed the Oregon Equal Pay Act. And kind of in a nutshell, the law is that comparable work calls for comparable pay. And the current, the current structure that we have at the city isn't based on an objective classification structure. So having our structure adjusted based off of objective reasoning, like the decision-making, complexity, supervisory scope and required minimum education, experience and training helps us achieve that. So we won't be at risk or at an exposure to a claim for the Oregon Equal Pay Act. Additionally, this is maybe not with the Oregon Equal Pay Act, but this system is much easier for the city to maintain moving into the future because it's had this broad overhaul based on objective criteria. We're able to easily slot new positions or updated positions into the system and not be worried that we're going to be violating any pay equity laws in doing that. So it's a really strong system. A lot of other organizations, public and private, use this type of system and it is able to last for many, many years. And there's some cities who have used this for 15 years without having to do a complete overhaul again. So it does have some lasting power that we're really excited about, but it also helps reduce our exposure for potential equal pay violations.
Thank you, Kylie. Any more to the presentation?
No, that's our presentation. So we'd be happy to take any questions that the council may have.
So let's open it up to discussion by council. Any questions or comments? Sal?
Okay, I guess I'm the person that tends to speak up. So a couple of questions, and you may have covered this and I may have just missed a major point. But what percentage of the total half a million that we're talking about allocating here would be going to management staff versus classified?
I did not think to run that.
I didn't.
Kylie, do you know?
I don't have it off the top of my head and I'm not confident speaking on it without running through the numbers. But I'm happy to take a look at that and, and get a response back to the council.
Yeah, I, yeah. So I, I'll just follow up with a couple of other questions that I have that may be additional data that we need for, or that I feel like I need for context. But I'm curious to know if we were to just correct for, first of all, what percentage is management versus classified? Second, what would it cost us to just correct for the gender pay equity requirement that the legislature's set? Do you have that second?
We don't have that because it is a, it's a complete change to our entire system. So this was essentially setting us up to have an equitable system moving forward. And I, I'm not confident in our ability to change only a select few positions. And I don't, I'm not speaking very clearly on this. I don't believe that we're actually out of compliance with Oregon's Equal Pay Act. Our system doesn't lend itself to be able to confidently not violate that, I guess. So having the entire system based on equitable characteristics across the board sets the entire city up to avoid those types of claims in the future. And we've not received any claims for equal pay at the city.
Thank you. What was the conversation among staff around concerns that we have been running a budget deficit for quite some time? And then this proposal contemplates using one-time monies to put a half a million dollars additional into salary and payroll. And yet we don't have a funding mechanism to pay for that going forward, one. And two, what's the, do we know what the increased costs are going to be? Because you increase, you know, by 2% for this one year salary and payroll, but then that, that will also carry additional long-term costs for PERS and, and other expenses that I think probably exceed 2% just on its face. So I guess I'm curious to get the staff's perspective on that as well.
I think Jeff has his hand up to take that question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
You're on mute.
Thanks, you're here. I'll, I'll take a first stab at that and then like Kylie or Jennifer add as they would like to. From, from my perspective, and I think part of what drove the decision as we, as we, as we agree as an executive team to move this forward is that while you're right, we have not yet solved our long-term financial stability issues. Whatever we end up with, whether we're a growing organization or a stable organization or a strengthening organization, we're still going to be having to rely on capable employees to deliver whatever levels of service we deliver. And, and whether we're smaller, larger or the same size as we are now, we still need to be able to be competitive with the market to attract and retain people because that's how we'll provide that service. So we, we see it as a, as a, as a, I guess, an appropriate and prudent way to ensure that we can deliver service, whatever the size and scope of the organization is. The other thing that I would say is while we don't have an official decision in place yet, it's, it is apparent to me that both the council and the budget committee are interested in crafting that solution over the next several months. And so in part, we recognize that this may create some additional carrying costs in the organization. But frankly, we would rather create those sort of carrying costs and be able to attract and retain people than have vacancy savings and not be able to effectively deliver service.
I don't think I have anything to add to that.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm trying to see if I can run the numbers and report back before, before we close the discussion. But I guess that in terms of the, the longevity and the, the ongoing impact of implementing this, you, it's absolutely accurate that having a higher just baseline of what the workforce salary is, that will, that means that we're at a different level every year going forward. And the way I look at it is, this is, what we're discussing now is a one-year issue. We can choose, you could choose not to do it at all and go with the, the, the way we budgeted it back before when, when things were really looking fair, you know, fairly desperate with the general fund in particular. But the only way that you can avoid kind of getting on to this next level is if you scrap altogether moving forward with the class and compensation study and retain the current structure that we've got. study and retain the current structure that we've got. And then that would be your base and you would be moving forward. So I don't know if that makes sense or if I'm expressing that well, but, um, if, my impression was that the council really did believe in this project and admittedly it has been going on since 2019. So it's taken, you know, much, a much longer time to get to what the results are and how that would impact our budget. Um, once we're, once we're on it, whether we do it starting retro to July 1 or a January 1 step off or delay till, um, July 1, 2023, at some point that shift up is going to happen. So does, does that make sense? Do you think I addressed the question, Counselor Peralta?
Jennifer, I, I think you did. I, I appreciate it. Um, and, and I also appreciated Jeff's comments as well. I guess, um, I'm having a hard time wra-, I mean, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around the idea of, um, putting our su-, putting our foot on the gas a little bit in terms of, um, in terms of staffing and compensation when I feel like my head's been wrapped around, um, struggling to just maintain the budget and bringing in new revenue to maintain just the basic service level. And so, um, for me, this is, yeah, so for me, this is, uh, and we haven't, I think this conversation we initially had in 2019. And I don't know that it's come back since then, um, to us. So for me, this is like a rapid headspin. Um, you know, and, and I'm, and I definitely agree with the need to, um, to transition in order to, to, if, if we need to make transitions. I mean, I heard, I've heard a, I guess, a couple of conflicting things about the need to make shifts to comply with, uh, state law. But, um, well, I'll just, I'd like to hear what my other colleagues have to say. So I'll, I'll, I'll leave that for now.
Thank you, Sal. Uh, let's go up to Chris.
Um, if you don't mind, Mayor, Jeff, were you wanting to say something in response to what Sal just said? Cause I may want to hear that before I comment.
Th- thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Yes, um, uh, to Counselor Peralta's point, it has been a while since we've had this, um, issue in front of you. The last time it was in front of you, we were really just talking about the classification component of the system and not the compensation piece. So it has been a while since we've had this conversation. Kylie can probably fill in the blanks in a little bit more detail.
We did also have our project consultants present to the council, um, and they did describe the changes to compensation during that presentation. I don't have the date of that in my head right now, but they did come and present information to the council about that, about both parts of the project, classifications and compensation.
Thank you, Kylie. Uh, Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Um, and I appreciate the added context there. Um, I'm also having a really hard time wrapping my head around this request. You know, seven months ago, eight months ago, we were furloughing our employees because our budget was so bad. Um, uh, now, uh, in, in the last three months, all of our conversations have been how bad our budget is, how much mu-, how we do not have enough money to maintain services. And now we're coming saying, let's blow a half a million dollars, um, that we didn't even have to fund base salaries seven months ago, eight months ago. So I'm struggling, trying to get from there. I mean, I've been arguing in every one of these budget decis- discussions we've been having that I don't think the underlying premise that we need more money is even true. And you seem to be coming forward and, and confirming that by saying we have an extra $500,000 available to spend here. Um, I, 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 I'm just, I'm really struggling to put these dots together in some sort of way that makes any logical sense at all. Um, um, that being said, I understand we need to, we need to make sure we're equitable in pay. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not totally in opposition to that, but it just, the timing is just, I, I'm really struggling trying to understand this. Um, and I guess that would be my, my, my first set of comments. Yes, Jeff, go ahead.
Uh, were you, I didn't want to interrupt. I just wanted to get in the queue if you're, and because you're not.
Okay. Um, I, and so that's, that's the main thing that I, I just wanted to voice that. Sal asked my questions for me, um, and did a really good job of kind of laying the foundation of where I'm coming from. Um, and, and I would just echo where Sal's at. I'm, I, I just feel like this is not the time to be having this conversation after we've spent months talking about how we don't have enough money to do basic services.
Thank you, Chris.
So, uh, do you want to go ahead and get Counselor Mankey's questions?
I will, and then come back to you. Uh, Kelly?
Thank you for, Mr. Mayor and Jeff, because I think this will probably be directed to you. Uh, I must admit that I agree with my two predecessor counselors here that it's a little bit of a whipsaw thing to, to deal with, uh, this. I, although I, I've been waiting for it to come down the pike. Uh, I guess I want to know if we take this half a million dollars out, where are we going to be with the ending fund balance? I mean, what makes us be so optimistic? Let's put it that way. And will we be gaining on the fund balance, uh, the ending fund balance somewhat? And I guess Jeff or Jennifer, whoever can handle this one?
Jennifer, do you want to talk specifically about the fund balance issue and then I'll take the rest?
Well, and this one time, this one-time investment would, you know, obviously it means that there's that much less available for future spending. So that's, that's a choice. Spend it now or retain it to spend it later on, uh, you know, other things, however the budget works out. But at, at this point, because we're just developing the budget numbers, I, I don't have clarity on where we're at, other than with the mid-year review, it did seem like we are, we are okay primarily, um, in terms of our people staying on track with, um, with the exceptions that we just went through, um, earlier. So, so it's, I mean, it's a quandary. And for me, as your finance director, it's, it's a tough one, but I recommended this to, um, to the city manager and to Kylie, the, the, um, July 1 recommendation. And for me, it was more in a context of the, um, the larger labor market and what we see happening here internally and also just what I can see just generally in the, um, local government field, just the number of positions. I just, I want to keep the best and the brightest and continue to attract them. And so for me, this is a strategic choice. Um, but it's, but there are other options and they're before you. So.
I, I will agree. This is a strategic choice. And as I read through it, it, it really does resonate. I do get it. I, I guess I look at, this will also probably have a heavy impact also on our revenue decisions as we go forward too. So that's, I keep seeing the ways we could spend money. It alarms me a little bit as we're pushing this forward. Uh, but no, I, I agree with the reasoning that you've given me. And I just would like some kind of warm fuzzy feeling that I'm not going to find out that dang, we have not made our, but our, uh, ending fund balance goals. Uh, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, I guess also if I could just one more thought, um, and then Jeff, it's, this, this is though an indicator, folks, that implementing this, even if we were to choose we're going to implement this July 1 of 2023, there just is going to be a new level. And so it's, um, and I'm try, I, until the numbers come in and I can actually run them through the system, which is part of my urgency of really wanting a decision. So I can do, run those kinds of, um, scenarios. Right now we're doing it all outside the system on spreadsheets and it makes me nervous. Um, but it's, it's, it's going to be, um, payroll costs are going to go up. Um, but I was glad to see that just proportionally relative to the entire payroll, it was, it was a 2% increase, which is kind of what you ex-, what you expect. So from that perspective, that also helped me think, well, maybe this isn't going to be, um, that, um, difficult to, to accommodate year to year.
Thank you. Do you have anything, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, I guess the only, uh, thing I would add, Jennifer did a nice job on the financial piece, um, is that you, th- th- this is a one-time investment. It is, just to, to, to reiterate a point, it is something that is in a council adopted strategic plan and, and was taken at the direction of the council. That doesn't obligate you to implement or to implement on a particular schedule. I understand that. And we respect your, your policy prerogative, um, to make those judgments, which is why this issue is in front of you. And at the same time, um, even in challenging times, it doesn't mean we don't spend money or we don't make prudent investments. And, and we really believe this is a prudent investment that will help stabilize our workforce, uh, set us up for success, whatever the future may hold in a, in a better way, uh, than our, than our current system does. Uh, and will also recognize, um, the challenges that, uh, have been absorbed by the employees who are here now. And Rich is showing off by sending the firefighters outside. So I apologize for him.
Budget move.
For the sirens. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, um, I, I was thinking about this comparatively with our, um, the federal cost of living increase for this next year, which is higher than it has been. I can't remember what it is.
5.9. 5.9, Remy.
5.9, yeah, tremendously. So I, you know, same about that because I think one, one of the struggles that I'm, I'm hearing as we're having this conversation is that we're looking at this as like this big increase in, or, or, or the discussion is kind of talking about kind of increasing staffing, but we're not increasing staffing, right? We're just, we're, we're talking about compensating for the work that's being done. And I, um, I have to say, coming out of the last couple of years and going through periods of working with reduced staff, you know, our staff's workload didn't decrease, um, when they were furloughed. Um, that work just had to still get done. So I think, um, having a large price tag on an item immediately following just kind of these, what feels like, uh, just many, many budget, uh, discussions. I think, I think that, I think, uh, my, my, my co-counselors are, are correct that the timing isn't great. But when is the timing great to realize that you're about a half a million dollars behind in competitive pay wages? Um, and, uh, and so I think I would like to, some of, um, Counselor Peralta's questions early on, um, I, I, I would like the, your first question, I'm not going to try to re-ask it because I, I know you were very clear in it. So I would love some of that, uh, some of the information. He has four questions. I think one of them's been answered very thoroughly. Um, that was on the gender pay equity. Um, that's, that, that's also leaves a couple of, uh, of, uh, of those open. And then I had two of my questions to add to the lit, my own questions to add to the list, but you're going to have to come back to me because I didn't write them down because I was so sure that I would remember them. Um, but I don't. Uh, uh, but I, I would also, um, um, just like us to kind of, uh, keep in mind too, that, um, Oregon right now has seen in the last year, um, uh, the greatest growth in median family income that, um, it has ever seen. Um, and that is largely, um, focused very, uh, i- i- into urban communities, but we are greatly affected by what happens. And I just would, um, be remiss not to talk about the fact that it's so important that, um, people that work for the city of McManville are able to live and able to afford to live in the city of McManville. And we have a lot of pressure coming. So I am not excited at the idea of, um, oh, I know my question. I would like to understand how department heads, especially, um, department heads with large increases are going to be sustaining this increase in payroll over time. Um, I would like that, uh, before making a, a decision. Um, and, uh, but I, I don't want us to, um, to kind of posit this in this thinking about this half million dollars of, of, of thinking of, of, as though we're increasing staffing. I really want to make sure we're keeping our headspace in that, um, that we're trying to, to have competitive wages for our staff and then also be keeping in mind kind of what's happening, um, in and around, uh, our local area, our state level and the, and the federal area, because all of that is, is very important as we move forward. Thank you. Thanks for so much time.
Thank you, Remy. Let's go back to Sal.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, I, um, you know, just kind of at first blush, I think I'd definitely be favorable to getting employees who are below scale up to scale for sure. Um, and I definitely have, um, you know, a, a perspective that folks who are in the classified employee range, um, you know, that have, um, generally far lower salaries and wages than folks in the, in the management categories. Um, I, I have probably more support for moving those folks up on a earlier time scale. And that's not intended as a negative reflection on the management staff. It's just a, it's just a, um, a perspective that I think that, you know, when you have folks who are a little closer to the, um, the minimum wage versus, you know, folks who are a little more in the six-figure range, that it's harder to absorb a lot of these costs for folks at the lower end of our, our pay, our pay scale. So, um, I, but I am kind of with Remy. There's more information that I'd like to see before I'll be, um, prepared to vote on this. So I'll, I'll be a no on the first reading and, um, and, and generally though, likely to support some kind of, um, package, uh, on the second reading that kind of aligns with some of the concerns that have been raised.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Adam. Or, um, just a second. Amanda, did you have something legally to put in?
I just wanted to clarify for Counselor Peralta that this is a resolution. So, um, so the process would be to adopt it.
Okay, then I, then my, um, then my motion, if I were to make a motion on the resolution, would be to withdraw the resolution tonight and bring it up for a future meeting.
Thank you, Sal. Adam?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, thank you fellow counselors for all the great questions. Definitely am in the same headspace as, as you guys. I would, I would like to see additional information, questions that have been asked back before us before, uh, taking us to a vote, especially with it being a resolution. Um, even though our mid-year review isn't, uh, more optimistic, uh, than I, you know, than we planned on it being, I, I would still like to see us, you know, at a minimum, get through this revenue discussion and, um, you know, kind of look at not putting the cart before the horse. I, I do understand the pressure that the labor force is putting on, on us as a city, but I also am a strong believer that wages aren't everything in retaining talent. So, um, as long as we're maintaining the culture that we want to maintain within the city to, uh, keep teams together, I don't think we need to be at the very top of every, of our competitor pay scales. Um, but I, I am in favor of, of bringing up some of our lower tiered, uh, team members to, to a more middle-of-the-road rate. Um, as Sal mentioned, I'm, I'm definitely more in favor of bringing, bringing them up versus management. Not nothing on management, just, uh, as far as being able to absorb inflation and gas prices and all the cost of living things that are going on, uh, just has a lot more of a dire effect on their family finances than a six-figure salary.
Thank you, Adam. Um, I'd like just to weigh in, not that I'm going to be voting on it, but I can tell you from my perspective, I truly support the classification piece of this. We have needed that for so long. And I think it's a way that we can more equitably, um, uh, give people an opportunity to grow, but by merit. Um, I, I've heard give people an opportunity to grow, but by merit. I've heard, I've heard the discussion around the table, and likewise, it is sticker shock to me, as my head still isn't even around the budget and revenue and expenses. We're working through that right now. I'll tell you, one thing that I haven't seen, and I think we've asked for, is, you know, we're looking at mid-year, but that has not been given to the council yet in a user-friendly approach. I hate to bring this back up, but I think it was a year ago that in December, at mid-year, we thought we were in good shape, and two months later, we were two million out. And so, I, I still struggle a little bit of really where we are. And I, and I have great trust in the process that we'll go through over the next, this budget cycle, the Budget Committee and the Council, so we really will know where we're at. I think it's premature to maybe swallow that whole pill right now until we know where we are. We've got to have a user-friendly approach of where we are at mid-year. And, and I haven't seen that. And so, that's where I was very uncomfortable. But at the same token, all the dialogue around doing right things for the right reason with our employees, you know, I'll tell you, the cost of losing employees and hiring new employees costs us tremendous. And if we're not in a position to share with our employees what we're trying to do about that, we are negligent. And so, I think we maybe, we need to put a little more emphasis on answering our questions, and especially for me, where we are at mid-year. You know, we've talked about seeing even a financial statement. We know we can't do that, but, you know, I truly want to have, you know, it may not need to be a work session, but a piece of time so that I could look at the numbers and know exactly where we are. And, you know, I think we phase this in maybe and not take the big bite all at once, but it all depends upon financially where we're sitting right now. Jeff?
So, we'll definitely bring back the information that we've heard the council request. I'm happy to do that. I just, I'm going to push back on a couple of things that I heard tonight. The, you know, the notion that this is sticker shock, I just, I would encourage you to look at the numbers. If we had budgeted a 2% COLA, which is what we would have done, but for the austerity budget that we put in place, these numbers would be netted out. I mean, the, the total impact of the staff recommendation is 2% on our, on our, on our personnel budget. And that is the number we would have built into last year's budget. It's going to be distributed differently because we have a more equitable system that we're putting in place for you. And, and so, I understand that we don't typically handle the, the salary system in a separate action. It's baked into the budget process, but it's always part of the budget process and always debated as part of the budget process. So, we will bring back additional information, but I just beg for a little bit of perspective when, when you, when you characterize the impact of this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Sal?
Thanks, Mayor. And it sounds like Jeff is prepared to pull this off of the agenda. I don't know if that requires a motion or anything for tonight to table the resolution, but I'd be prepared to table this for tonight to bring it up on another day.
Amanda, how do we handle that?
As long as no one makes a motion to approve it, then we can just move it on to the next agenda. So, unless there's somebody who feels a desire, it sounds like Jeff has indicated we'll bring back more information.
Okay. Thank you for the good dialogue around this. So, we have in front of us Resolution 2022-07. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution? Seeing none, then we will take Resolution 2022-07 off the agenda this evening and bring it back at a later date when staff can bring more information to us. Thank you for that good discussion. Okay, our next, we'll move to ordinances. And if I'm not mistaken, Amanda, do you have a, do you have a kind of a prelogue to talking about ordinance number 5109?
I hadn't really thought of that. I figure we'll just go with the standard script that you have and we'll go from there.
Okay, great. We have, we're considering the first reading with possible second reading of ordinance number 5109. Does any one counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Seeing none, then Amanda, would you read ordinance 5109 by title, by title only?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the first reading of ordinance number 5109, an ordinance of the city of McMenville, amending chapters 10.04, 10.28, and 10.44 of the McMenville municipal code relating to abandoned vehicles.
Thank you. We will now call on our city attorney to present. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor Hill. I'm going to have Chief Scales and potentially Captain Simons chiming in as needed, but I'm going to share my screen real quickly. Okay, does it look, look good? You can see the PowerPoint?
Yep.
Okay, so, so thank you, Mayor and counselors. We are back today to discuss the ordinance number 5109. It was last brought to council on January 11th, 2022. And a roadmap for today's discussion, the first, first right off the bat, staff are going to be recommending that this ordinance, the discussion on this ordinance continue to the February 8th, 2022 meeting, primarily because there are additional revisions that staff are proposing, that we'd like some feedback from council. And so, since those revisions were not in your council packet, we'd like the ability to bring it back on February 8th. So, after that, or well, with that proviso, we're going to give a brief overview of how we got to this point. And then, we're going to walk through the proposed revisions and then talk about next steps. So, how we got here is, I want to start with the January 11th, 20, oh, sorry, Counselor Minkie, did you have a question before I get into the background?
I just want to know, is there any new law or new rulings in regard to the Idaho case? It sounded like last time when we talked that there might be, and that's why I'm asking.
So, there's, there's two laws that might, that are pertinent. One has not gone into effect yet. It doesn't go into effect until July 1, 2023. Another one is House Bill 3124, which already is in effect. It's, went into effect in 2021. That does impact our discussion, so we will be talking about that bill a little bit. And it has to do, deal with camping. So, we will discuss that, yes.
Thank you.
So, yep, no problem. So, going to January 11th, 2021, the feedback, the main message that at least I took away from that was, council wanted some clarification and potentially codifying the current practices that the police department undertakes when dealing with abandoned vehicles, particularly with how they contact and inform the vehicle owner or the person potentially living in a vehicle prior to towing. But what we had communicated is, the police department already does make efforts to reach out to people to, you know, get them to move along or correct whatever the issue is that's causing a vehicle to be identified as abandoned. That's just not codified in our code. And so, with that, we took a step back and, and those were, that, those led to the revisions that were in the council packet. As we sort of continued to mull the situation over and thinking about, you know, what we need to do to be compliant and also be responsive to the community needs, that led us to talk about House Bill 3124, which revised ORS 203.079. And what that statute discusses is basically what the requirements are of an authority who has no, who wants to clear out a camp, a campsite. So, there's noticing requirements, there's requirements for how long you hold any personal property that you collect that has utility or value tied to it. What the House Bill did is it extended the noticing period from a 24-hour notice to 72 hours, and it also added some requirements for where, where items have to be held within the jurisdiction. And what remained unclear from that House Bill was what is considered an established campsite. So, it talks about basically, before you remove a homeless person from an established campsite, is the terminology it uses, there's these requirements. But there's no definition of what is an established campsite. So, that led us to review the interplay between our local code on camping and abandoned vehicles, and then with this state statute in, you know, in play as well. So, our camping ordinance is in chapter 8.36, and the, our vehicle and traffic code is in Title 10. So, basically, we were looking at those, those two things. Now, when I said, as I said, when we, when the state statute doesn't define what an established campsite is, well, that's when you go look at our local code and what our local code says. So, in chapter 8.36, it defines a campsite as any place where one or more persons have established, have established temporary sleeping accommodations by use of camp facilities and/or camp paraphernalia. And camp facilities is defined in our code to include vehicles. And so, when we looked at those definitions, it occurred to us that under our code, even though the state statute doesn't define what a campsite is, under our code, a vehicle can constitute a campsite. The problem with our code is we don't define what it means to have an established campsite. So, there's all this talk about when is it actually now a campsite? So, that really is what got us on this, this track of thinking that we need to be very clear and intentional, both for our staff and for the community about how we're regulating vehicles in the right of way, with the background of the state statute. And so, what we're going to be proposing tonight and sort of walking through is basically creating a separation between what is an abandoned vehicle, what is, what is a bicycle that has, you know, like a turtledove pod that it's towing, and then vehicles that are inhabited. So, RVs and even cars that may be, that have the appearance of being inhabited. And so, that way, it'll be clear, you know, based on an evaluation of what the vehicle is, is it inhabited or not, which process you have, the city staff has to, have to follow. So, rather than overlapping, it's not going to overlap anymore, is what we're proposing. So, we're going to walk through each of these, each of these revisions. So, I want to give a brief overview because it's pretty dense material. What we're going to do is we're going to start with the revisions that were included in the council packet. So, in particular, attachments two and three to the staff report, those red lines that are included are the, show the red lines of the changes from January 11th to what was included in the ordinance 5109 for the January 25th packet. So, there's three main revisions. We clear, we did some further revisions to the definition of abandoned vehicle. We revised the definition of vehicle, and then we put in a new, whole new provision to explain the current process that the police department uses for contacting and informing a vehicle owner prior to tagging the vehicle for tow. So, we're going to walk through those. Then, we're going to walk through the further revisions that staff are proposing for council feedback. First is looking at a revised chapter 8.36 to address RV campsites. The second is further revision to the abandoned vehicle definition to exclude inhabited vehicles, so that way they'll just fall under camping. And then, further revising the process for communicating with the owner, because now we're pulling out inhabited vehicles from this, from the abandoned vehicle process. And so, we need to make sure that the communication processes matched that change. So, the initial revisions that are provided in the council packet for this meeting. So, one of the, the main thing with the definition of abandoned vehicle is, Council President Drabkin had indicated that there was some vagueness, which is true, about the number five for what could be considered an abandoned vehicle, which is the vehicle appears to have been abandoned by its owner. Now, staff don't use that as the sole basis for determining if something's an abandoned vehicle, so it really wasn't necessary for an enforcement, and it is vague. And so, we felt like we could eliminate that fifth condition, and still it would retain it, the, the code could still retain the, the ability for, or the definition could still meet the enforcement needs of, of the police department. The second thing, and this was something Counselor Gary had brought up, was about bicycles being defined, being included in the definition of vehicle. And that essentially meant that the police department of the city could regulate bicycles that were towing the turtledove pods. And so, what we recommended was including bicycles in the definition of vehicle for the general purposes of chap, of Title 10, because there's many other places where bicycles are, are need to continue to be included as in the definition of vehicle, but then just exempted out when we're talking about abandoned vehicles. So, that way, bicycles would not, would not be subject to enforcement under the abandoned vehicle code provisions. Any questions about these two definitions about abandoned vehicle and, and vehicle before I move on? I'm not seeing any raised hands. Well, virtual raised hands, so I'm assuming I can. Okay, and then the biggest change was with regard to codifying the current practices for in, making contact with an owner or possessor of the, of a vehicle prior to noticing for tow. So, we basically created a brand-new provision in the section, which is the 10.28.085, communication to owner of abandoned vehicle. And basically, what we said is that prior to tagging for tow, the city has to place an informational flyer, which they already do. It's just, again, we're codifying what they already do. Have to place an, an informational flyer on the vehicle. And then, we added, if we believe that the vehicle is lived in, that will also provide an informational flyer regarding prohibited camping, and that will also attempt to make contact in person with the individual residing in it. So, those two parts are going to be pulled out, as you'll see later on, when we pull out, pull out vehicles that could, that are, appear to be used for camping purposes, or reside for inhabit, that people are using for, to sleep in or whatever, that we pull all of that out. So, it will no longer be in 10.28.085. B, Section B says that they have to, that the city must retain evidence of its compliance. Again, the city already does it, takes photographs showing that it's posted these informational flyers. So, again, this is not a new process that we're creating, it's just codifying it. And then subsection C essentially allows for an emergency circumstance where if we need to get it tagged for a tow immediately, that we still have the ability to do that. We just have to document what the emergency circumstance is. So, so these cover the revisions that, that we were, that are in the current council packet. Are there any questions about these revisions before I move on to the newly proposed revisions?
Any discussions or question? Sal?
Thank you, Mayor. So, my question, I appreciate these revisions. I think it's definitely an improvement over what we had, even if it's, even if it's just reflecting the current process, at least you're articulating the current process for people, and they'll understand what those rules are. My question is related to vehicles that we know to be or believe to be legitimately abandoned now. For example, we got an email from Ellie Gunn, and have had a few emails from her and others about vehicles that really are clearly not being lived in, but that have been abandoned for some time. I've, I've heard conflicting things. Is there anything in our current code that's preventing the police, or what is it that's preventing them from, from towing? Is it, is it cost? I see Chief Scales has an answer for me there, Sal.
Yeah, can, everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Locations. Yeah, thank you, Counselor Peralta. We have had discussions with Ellie Gunn. It is not crystal clear to us, I will say, I would say this, one, we're battling one thing where we have a parking enforcement position that's not filled. That's not saying we still That's not saying we still aren't towing abandoned vehicles. Here is where we're running into a little bit of a problem. Uh, and Captain Simons, I had a little bit of a discussion, uh, where the complainant doesn't want the vehicle to be tagged for tow. So that's where we're, that's where we're running in a little bit of a, of a problem. Secondly, um, if you've seen the photo, it appears as though the trailer could be inhabited. That is going to trigger what we're going to talk about next, where we're running into, we need to meet, uh, we need to have a process, uh, that's legitimate and is codified by the code that allows us to move forward. So, um, there's some, a little bit of discrepancy. Uh, we had conversations with her. Although it appears in the, on the front end, they probably are not abandoned. They're just, they're moving, they're moving as she may be explaining her, I believe, her letter this, this afternoon. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you, chief.
You bet.
Okay, uh, councillor Peralta, did you have any other questions about these initial, um, revisions?
No, thank you, Amanda.
Okay, great. Then I will move on to the further revisions. So, um, the first revision that the staff are proposing and, um, is now we're getting into the camping code because staff really are starting to understand, we need to create this delineation between when we're enforcing our camping ordinance and when we're enforcing the abandoned vehicle code. So the first thing is, um, there's no definition for established, either in the state statute or in our local code for what is considered an established camp, campsite. And the reason that we felt that we needed to define that is because particularly when you're dealing with vehicles that could potentially be moved a certain distance. The question is, well, at what point in time does that become a new campsite versus the current campsite? So, um, so that's why we're proposing having a definition. And essentially what it means is, um, that if the creation, installation or placement of camp facilities and/or camp paraphernalia, and again, camp facilities and camp paraphernalia are currently defined in our code. They include, the camp facilities includes vehicles. And what we're saying for establishing a new campsite is it's considered to establish a new campsite if it's moved more than 500 feet from the prior location. And the reason that we settled on 500 feet is that is roughly about two blocks, but not every, um, place where this is occurring has city blocks clearly delineated. So we wanted to put a foot diff, distance that reflected, you know, a couple of city blocks. So that's why we, we stuck with 500 feet. We think it's a reasonable number. And rather than saying, you know, a mile or five miles, that's, that's not as realistic, I would say for, for movement and being considered reasonable. So that was, that's our proposal to, um, further just clarify both for our staff and for the community, when, when a campsite is going to be considered the same campsite and when it's going to be considered a new campsite under our code. The second, um, addition that we're doing under, or second revision that we're proposing, again, this is in our camping code, is to codify what the amendments to House Bill, that House Bill 3124, um, did to ORS 203079. So essentially what we're, uh, one of the things that the ORS requires is that we hold anything and ev, anything in evidence for, we have to hold it for at least 30 days. And, um, then there's processes for, you know, how we can, uh, dispose of it after that. A lot of times what ends up happening when we're enforcing the camping ordinance, to the extent something gets taken into evidence, usually it's released before the 30 days, but that has to come from the city prosecutor. So essentially what we're saying here is we're going to, by saying that we'll do enforcement consistent with the, with the statute or until released by the city prosecutor. So that way, if, if we can release it sooner, we'll release it sooner based on the city prosecutor confirming that, um, she doesn't need the evidence anymore for prosecution of the camping ordinance. And then, um, then we just further reiterated that if we are going to release anything, um, back, that the person needs to have some evidence that they own or have some legal right to possess the, the, um, personal property and that for, um, a vehicle that they have to have current valid automobile insurance. So those are the two provisions that we're, um, recommending to make to the camping code, just to make it abundantly clear about the processes, um, for enforcement of, of the camping ordinance. So are there any questions about this? We'll get into the, how we're doing the delineation. That's going to come in chapter, uh, title 10.
Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, councillor Garvin?
You're on mute?
Sorry about that. I was just, uh, curious if there's any case law that had you guys arrive at the 500 foot. I know we don't want a couple of miles on there, but also when you think of some of the areas, 500 feet seems like they just moved from one end of the congregation to the, to the far end. So I don't know if 500 feet really accomplishes much.
Not only did we not find any case law, um, I also searched several cities or codes on camping and none of them have. We are, we are, um, groundbreaking in, in, um, creating this definition and setting up these parameters for what's an, what's an established campsite.
So on that, I would be, uh, a lot more in favor of a thousand feet. That's still less than a quarter mile or less than five telephone poles on P-Vine.
Yeah. So what, what I'll do is I'll make a note of that. And that would be something, when we get to the end of our presentation, I'd like to get further feedback from the rest of the council about, about distances, um, because that's something then we'll, we'll put in for the February 8th council, um, packet. So I will make a note of that to come back to. Okay. Anything else on the camping, uh, code updates?
That's all for me. Thank you.
Uh, can I, can I add something, Amanda?
Sure.
And, and I don't want to, I'm not going to take a ton of this time, but I, I do want to reiterate that, uh, this is, um, this code that is being developed is much more clean. As, uh, Amanda had said, in our, our estimation, we had a, um, supervisors meeting a week ago. And this is exactly what came up, was that the code was confusing and that it was, um, conflicting in some manners. So, um, uh, this really has provided an avenue for abandoned vehicles and, um, as proposed, and then on this, uh, on the camping side, it's become much more complex, um, through some of the sta, uh, state laws that have come through, that, that have, that have made dealing with, um, camp sites much more difficult and much more, um, time consuming. So, but this process certainly will provide us an avenue and a mechanism and a lever, a lever we can pull and, um, to, to find resolutions, hopefully. Not that it won't be problematic, um, in some, in some regards, and I, I think I'll get to that later on. But, um, I, I just want to say that this is much more clean and, and will be cleaner to our staff.
Thank you, chief. Let's go up to Chris and then Sal.
This is actually a related but non-german question. But it's on my mind, so I'm going to ask it while it's on my mind, because I might forget it in, in the next five minutes. What is the process by which we determine which tow company that we use? On any given time?
Uh, the tow company, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Matt.
Tow companies for abandoned vehicles specifically, they're on a rotational basis. Uh, so they go through a state, uh, and the county to get, uh, onto a rotation. Uh, so that's just, uh, who's ever up. So it's, it's, uh, those that want to meet certain criteria and want to be a part of this rotation are on the abandoned vehicle rotations. Uh, the RVs, like I've mentioned many times before, are much more, um, labor intensive and problematic. And there's a number, um, that we, there's a number that we have tried to get ahold of and utilize, uh, that aren't willing to do it for us. But we have found a company, um, locally that's out of, actually based out of Albany, but, uh, has a local yard that, uh, we've been able to, um, utilize for the RV toes.
Is, is that something that's an unchangeable system? And, and, and is it the same system that is used for, say, you know, I, when I had the pleasure of doing a ride along, I saw some situations where toes came, became part of the process of, um, but that the police had to call in. I, is that the same system used then as well?
Well, if you're talking about abandoned vehicles, um, motor vehicle crashes?
Uh, no, this was motor, this was, uh, due to ticket enforced suspension, DUI, whatever, needing to tow the vehicle.
Okay, yeah. So this was, that's probably for that, uh, that's again, on a rotational basis. It's not a, a, a call anybody that we want. They're actually rotation through YCOM that, that keeps track of that.
And, and there's no way to, that's the system more confused? Or is that something that's up for discussion at any point in time or?
I, I think that is up for some discussion at some point. Um, and I know Captain Simons has worked with Amanda to try to figure out if we can get a, um, a contract with a local tow company, uh, to have a, um, a contract with the city for these types of specific toes. So that has been discussed and I know that's, um, in, in the queue at some point, just hasn't risen to the top because it's the, really candidly, the system's not broke right now. Uh, what, what is broke is trying to find somebody to take RVs all the time.
I under, I, I, I understand. It, it, I, I, I'll take this conversation offline in another ten.
You betcha.
Sal?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, chief, I just wanted to just make a comment, um, hopefully for you to take back to your staff. I just want to say, I really appreciate the work and the professionalism of, of your department. And I appreciate that both, uh, us as a city council and the legislature and the courts have made the job of policing a lot more difficult in the last couple of years. Um, and particularly with the cultural issues that we're facing. And so, um, I just wanted to express my gratitude to you and your, and your team, um, for really trying to manage a, a very challenging and difficult, um, period, uh, and set of problems.
I will take that back to them. I appreciate that. Um, labor intensive for this code revision, uh, kudos goes to Amanda.
Okay, so we will move on to then the title 10. These are the further revisions to the vehicle code that we're recommending. So going again to the definition of abandoned vehicle. The part down at the very bottom in blue is the revision that we're looking to add, which is that a vehicle the city believes to be inhabited is not an abandoned vehicle for the purposes of this title, but may be subject to the camping provisions in chapter eight point three six. So that's what's going to signal both to staff and the community that if a vehicle appears to be a banned, uh, to be inhabited, that then the correct enforcement mechanism is through our camping ordinance, not through the abandoned vehicle code. Um, and I think Captain, uh, that Chief Scales and I will both talk a little bit about enforce, what this means from an enforcement perspective at the end. But again, it is cleaner, it's clearer, and it's more compliant with state law to do it this way, frankly. Um, and then the other revision that we're looking to make is because we're pulling out inhabited vehicle or perceived inhabited vehicles from the abandoned vehicle code, that meant that we needed to go back and revise this new provision regarding communications to owners to pull out anything that had to do with the, with, um, vehicles that we believe to be inhabited. So, um, the additional informational flyer and the additional, um, effort to make uh, content, in-person contact have been pulled out, um, based on it not being an inhabited vehicle anymore. So, oh yeah, um, before I get into the next thing, does, is there any, uh, questions or, um, comments about the abandoned vehicle definition and, um, the communications provisions? Not seeing any. You also have time at the end to talk. I'm not, not precluding that either. So, um, this, this one is a little bit more weighty and, um, I, we definitely want to get some council feedback on this. Um, I had, and I've gotten some additional staff, um, discussion about it as well. So, um, when we were walking through this, what we tried to do is think about what are the enforcement, what are the realities of current enforcement going on right now? And a lot has evolved over the last several years from thinking about campsites as traditional, you know, a tent being set up somewhere to now it includes vehicles. And then we've had, um, bicycles with these turtledove pods. And where should, where do, do they fall in enforcement if there's an enforcement action that needs to be taken? And as, um, councillor Gary had noted, that the way our abandoned vehicle code definitions worked, they could be regulated under the abandoned vehicle code. Um, and that didn't seem appropriate. And so that's why we're pulling out the, the bicycles from abandoned vehicles. The question though became, well, where do they get to go? We have, under, under the, um, interpretations, um, of, from the Boise decision and then some further clarifications, unless there are enough beds for the number of homeless people that are, that exist in the city, we can regulate time, place, manner, but we can't say people have nowhere to go. That's not allowed. And what we've found is that bicycles, um, are currently not allowed to park on street, on the street. So a lot of times where you will see turtledove pods and they're, and the bicycles are on, are on a curb on the street. And technically that's not allowed under our code. Um, and because they're considered vehicles, there are also a lot of regulations about where off the right of way they can go, which is basically nowhere. So, um, so that led to us talking about, okay, well, where do we tell people they can go? And that really led to us discussing two potential options. The first would be, um, that we could amend the code to no, to allow bicycles to be located on the street. Now, there are some serious safety concerns about that because people can crash into those, to the bicycles into the pods, and when somebody's living in a pod, you know, there could be serious harm caused to a person. And especially given that they sit a little bit lower, they're not as visible. You know, it's just a, it's a serious safety concern that, that we want to be mindful of. The second, um, option that we thought about was parking in planter strips, um, which right now vehicles obviously are not allowed to park in a planter strip. And since it says a vehicle isn't allowed to be parked in a planter strip, that would include a bicycle and thus the pod attached. So one of the other options we thought about was, um, the exclusion of vehicles within the planter strip, changing that to just motor vehicles. So that way a bicycle and a pod could be in a planter strip. Now, there's also concerns with that because planter strips are not merely decorative. They, um, they're generally, there's utilities that run under planter strips. Planter strips are used for, um, stormwater runoff mitigation. And, um, property owners do landscaping and have irrigation systems in those planter strips. So there could be damage to landscaping and irrigation systems by allowing people to, um, locate in, in the planter strips. So, um, this is something that, so the proposal that we have, um, on this screen is to allow for them to be located in the planter strip. But really what I'd like us all to discuss is these two options. Again, there's no perfect solution and a lot of this, there's very rarely a perfect solution. So it's what is the best option given the circumstances that we find ourselves in? And I've also briefed this issue with our public works director and, um, David Renshaw, um, since he oversees streets and to discuss, and parks to discuss this issue as well. And, um, I feel like I've relayed some of the concerns that, that they've identified. But obviously I'd be, um, if David has any further comments on that, you know, I'd be happy for, to have him talk. But I see Matt raised his hand, so I'll let him go first.
Yeah. So, uh, just a little bit of perspective, as we talked about, uh, the reason we sort of landed on, uh, F proposed motor vehicle being allowed on the, uh, the, the public right of way, the planter strip specifically is, uh, within the last couple of months, we've had two, uh, turtledoves that have been struck by vehicles. One causing, uh, some pretty significant injuries. So, you know, as, as Amanda mentioned, uh, this, it's not like, hey, well, this could happen. Well, it actually has happened. So this is sort of where we landed with this. And, and again, candidly, we didn't have this two, three years ago when the code came into effect. We weren't dealing with turtledoves. We were dealing with, uh, vehicle camping, um, uh, to, and then also, um, uh, tent camping. But when we, when we're talking to turtledoves or those that are, um, able to, are using them, we really have no place to tell them where it's, it's acceptable for them to park because they technically can't be on the, on the street to, it's relatively unsafe, as proved within the last month or two. So we need to find a mechanism to say, hey, you can go here or this is acceptable under city code. Because right now we have nowhere to tell them. They obviously can't go to parks. They have to have permission from private property owners and, and, uh, and parking lots, uh, the same. So, um, this is, again, as, as Amanda's mentioned, this is sort of, um, our best, our best guess, that it might be the safest.
Sal?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I know this would be changing our policy, uh, and, uh, and it might not be a good idea, but by way of brainstorming, I just want to, you know, by way of brainstorming, I just want to, you know, in the spirit of trying to figure things out, throw out a thought. If, assuming that this doesn't change the main terms of the camping program, that that people can only camp in a spot overnight, and then they have to move on the next day, is there any reason, or is there, you know, what are some reasons why we might not consider allowing the turtle doves to camp in in parking spots within a park overnight? You know, provided that they they don't make it a permanent spot and they move on? And it seems to me that would be safer than a planter spa- strip or, and I know it's counter to our policy, so like I said, it might not be a great idea, but I just wanted to throw that thought out there.
Yeah, so I'll I'll start, and maybe Matt might have some initial additional thoughts. So my initial thought is, well, first, parks are expressly excluded as a place where people can camp. So it would be a change to policy, it would be a change to our code if if we were to allow that. The two issues that I see, though, you know, off the top of my head, though, I'd want to think through it a little bit more, is, one, is it feels, my gut is telling me if we allow one type of camping but not other types of camping, like, I'd, I'd have to think through that a little bit. But the other thing is, and this is, we'll talk about this with enforcement, is that by putting all of this under the camping ordinance with the 72 hours, if somebody is violating the camping ordinance, they could be there for 72 hours or potentially a little bit longer in the park, in the park, or in the park parking lot. And so it's not necessarily a given that people will just move on the next day. And frankly, we can't require them to move on the next day. We have to give them at least a 72 hour notice before we take any further enforcement action. So, Matt, did you have any other thoughts on that?
No, that was exactly what I was thinking. You know, is it, it is extended to 72 hours. And I know, you know, obviously Director Muir and I have had conversations about this, and that would be less than ideal. I think specifically she, you know, we're consistently dealing with RVs in there as well, so that aren't complying with leaving. We've had some alternative discussions about, you know, ways in which parks can be more secured in the middle of the night, so we're not having the insides of the park, parking lots becoming RV for overnight camping.
Kelly?
Does the planter strip also, you, they have the opportunity to stay for 72 hours, or is that strictly dawn to dusk to dawn?
No, every, anything, so our code all says throughout, 6:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m., you're not allowed to camp. The problem is, is that if somebody is violating that rule, we have to give them 72 hours notice. So even if they're violating the rule, they they'll be able to violate it for at least 72 hours before we can do it, we can take any enforcement action to remove, to remove whatever is there. So we could cite them, but but it's the 72 hours before we can remove anything. And that's what I, that's one of the things that I want to, that I want to get to about enforcement is while this is cleaner, while we, Matt and I agree that this is consist, more consistent with state law than what our current code is set up to be, from an enforcement perspective, it is going to be longer. It's, it's going to be, it's just going to require more time. And as Matt was alluding to, one of the issues that we have, under our camping code, under the state statute, we're required to hold on to everything for at least 30 days unless we can release it sooner. We don't necessarily have a place to to store, to store these items. So that is going to be, from a implementation standpoint, that is going to be a challenge. But we are required to do that under the state law. So we've got to find a way.
Yeah, we can store, the turtle doves aren't the problem, it's the RVs vehicles specifically.
Well, I'm just thinking you might get some very cranky homeowners if they're parking on that strip.
Well, and and I will say that residential areas are also expressly excluded, so we're talking about commercial and industrial, but still, given that that could be the reality. And one of the things that we're talking about internally is if there is damage to a planter strip, what, what is our policy regarding dealing with the damage?
Yeah, well, I think we've already seen the commercial owners are just as crazy, cranky as residents would be if it was reversed.
Yep.
I see David Renshaw's hand up, and I think he wants to get into this discussion. David?
Well, if I'm not speaking out of turn, Your Honor, I just wanted to emphasize a couple of things is when it comes to the park strip, I do think it would be mindful to make sure we reach out to our franchise partners, the Comcast, particularly Water and Light. Those folks have a certain, they're, they're franchise utility, so they have a certain right to be in those, those areas. And I think we'd want to know what the impact on their operations would be. And I, and I would be concerned about the impact on things that are provided for, paid for by private parties. You know, the, the obvious example to me is the park strip along Marsh Lane adjacent to Water and Light. That that's landscaping put in by someone else other than the city, maintained by someone else other than the city. And now if we have a program that directs people to use that space, it's going to be pretty hard to to not be responsible to clean up whatever happens in that space. So I sure recognize the need to to put folks in a safe spot, and I just wonder if there are other alternatives that we might, might consider.
Thank you, David. Let's go up to Remy.
Mr. Mayor, so what if there is no planter strip, especially if we're talking commercial and industrial and just knowing kind of the landscape out there right now? You know, how would this apply if, say, you were on a side street, a feeder street off of Alpine Avenue, for instance? There's no planter strip, it goes from street directly into what, well, it seems to go directly from street to private property, or, you know, it's hard to tell where the public right of way ends in in a number of industrials. So that's my first question.
Yeah, so the, the proposal that's, that at least we want some feedback on from 1028030 is only the planter strip. So in your circumstance, where you're saying there's no planter strip, that wouldn't be a place they could go.
So, so this is for commerc- commercial and res-, I'm sorry, commercial and industrial areas that have been developed enough that they include planter strips? Is that, that's what, which I would think is pretty rare? No, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking out in our industrial park and like, that's kind of where you're, you're saying planter strips in front of those. I don't know, it feels like that's trying to push people into places that are illogical for me in a, in a number of ways. One is that, you know, those who don't have shelter, they're not only seeking that shelter, they're also see, trying to be somewhat invisible, right? So our industrial and commercial, our industrial areas especially, that are developed enough to have planter strips, and they're, they're, I don't think there's, oh, there's not a lot of that out there. Maybe I'm totally wrong on that, but where, what I, what's jumping into my mind, where I'm thinking of those industrial areas that have planter strips, then, as Mr. Renshaw just brought up, that's because those particular lands have actually been kind of developed to, I, at least what I'm thinking about, they, they've been developed, kind of, they're further along in development, or there've been more, many of them were recently developed. So now you're, now we're kind of pushing people into places that seem a little bit more wide open as opposed to secured, and then into somewhat more recently developed areas. And I know that I'm making some gross generalizations when I say that. I get that, I understand there are, I'm sure there's planter strips in industrial areas that are not new and and whatnot. But I, I think, yeah, I mean, I have a lot of concerns on, you know, with the, with this. I, I, I mean, I think what I like is looking for, looking to be able to designate some space that is not hazardous to people living in turtle doves or to the public. And, and so provide some sort of safety in that way, but also doesn't set, set people up for, for failure. But those people, whether those are members of our staff who are trying to enforce this, or those that are trying to figure out where they're going to sleep for the night and are trying to interpret the, what this part of it means. I assume, I, I, I mean, I can't think of a lot of other publicly owned spaces that I can't hear immediate pushback against. So Counselor Peralta talked about parking lot spaces in parks, but those are problematic. Clearly, if we said sidewalks are okay, then the, then sidewalks would be obstructed so, or could be obstructed, and so that could be problematic. I, I feel like we're, we're, the focus is, I don't know, I'm, I'm not hearing where, I'm not hearing us find places that feel, I'm not hearing, I don't see the success in this, I guess. I don't know how else to say it. I don't, but I don't see how there's a win coming out of this chain, this particular part of the change, or the, this proposed change, in that I feel like there's still a lot of vagueness, and it lacks some clarity. And what I think would be so helpful is if people, if we're able to give very clear direction of, of where you can go. And I guess I, I suppose you could say planter strips does that, but then it's planter strips in residential zones is not allowed, only in commercial and industrial. I mean, all of a sudden, we're adding, adding enough layers that compliance is going to become increasingly, is, is going to be difficult, I think. I'll, I'll stop, but thanks for, for listening to some of my concerns.
Thanks, Remy. Let's go to Chris.
Just quick clarification, Amanda, you threw out the phrase residential, residential areas are excluded. Specifically, which law are you referring to that excluded residential?
It's in our, I'd have to pull up the code, but it's in our local code in camping. It lays out this, so we have already time, place, manner regulations that say where and when you can camp and residential. So I think it's the underlying residential zoning is the one that's excluded. Matt might know better than me, but I'm pretty sure that's how it's worded in the code.
So, if I can get you that code, if you need it, just for clarification and clarity.
Yeah, I, well, I guess where I'm getting at is it, it's our code, and there was nothing in the state code that overrode that portion of our code.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I was trying to get at. Thank you.
Yep, exactly right.
David, your hand's still up, you still have other comments?
Other than the fact I'm an idiot, no, sir, I, I don't.
Remy, your hands back up?
Yes, and I will not approach the conversation here about what you all think about whether or not I'm an idiot or not. I'm just gonna, I raised my hand again intentionally, say that. I had a question as well. Amanda, you said you believe this, something I'm paraphrasing a little bit, get us closer to being compliant with the state law. Do you feel like this, do you feel like your proposed changes here, what you're working through, do you feel like that still will still leave the city open to a potential challenge of being compliant with any state law around these?
No, I mean, we have to resolve the, this bicycle issue, but no, what I do mean is that, I think it's, is it House Bill 3115, Matt? I think that's what, I can't remember, it's Senate Bill or House Bill, that doesn't go into effect until July 1, 2023. That is something that we, that I've alluded to and that we have talked about internally, that we may still be, we may currently be compliant with it, but it's something that we need to look more in depth about. And the League of Oregon Cities is actually working on some model code and some, some resources for, for local jurisdictions on the implementation of like how to comply with that. So what I'm alluding to is there may come a time when we're coming back to say, we need further, we need to do something more in light of this new law, but that one's not in effect yet, so we don't have to be compliant with it yet.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'll do, since I feel like we're kind of getting into this discussion, if people can remember this in your minds about, about this, the next steps, of course, is just recommending the continuance, that we're recommending continuance until February 8th. But I'd like to stop sharing my screen, so we can have a discussion on two points. The first is, I'd actually like some council discussion about the distance and whether, how people are feeling about 500 feet versus 1,000 feet or some other distance. And then let's talk about the, where to locate the turtle doves pods.
Let's go with Remy and then Chris, and then Kelly. Chris?
Sorry, did I not unmute?
Nope, you, you weren't, you were muted, so if you were talking, we didn't hear you.
Fail on the fail, immediate follow-up failure. I was just going to throw out a warning signal on a discussion around distance that's not based on much of anything. We did a lot of rounds with this with Planning Commission and City Council when we were trying to establish distances on vacation rentals. There was 600 feet between B and Bs, so we had 600 feet between vacation rentals, and then the public didn't like 600 feet. And so then we changed it to 300 feet, and the public didn't like 300, and then it went back to the Planning Commission, and then it's, now I believe it's 200 feet. And there are people that are unhappy with it being 200 feet. And all of the numbers and all of the meetings and all of the discussion that we ever had around those numbers, I just, we, we, all of those numbers, similar to these numbers, were numbers that we made up, that were based on what we perceived could potentially be better, but there was really no basis. And I, I just, I just want to throw that out there, that I don't think there's a magic number here. Thanks.
Thank you, Remy. Let's go to Chris, and then Kelly, and then Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate the warning, Council President, and I'm going to immediately not heat it and say I agree with Counselor Garvin that I think we should reconsider that at 1,000 feet.
Thank you. Let's go to Kelly.
I find it interesting that you folks kept making the distance smaller. I, I think 1,000 feet sounds really good to me.
Thank you. Let's go to Sal.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I also agree with 1,000 feet, and I wish Remy hadn't brought up the, the vacation rentals, because she raised questions that I'm going to have to call her about later because her memory is a little different than mine. I thought we kept increasing the, the distance between vacation rentals to reduce the number of them. But Zach shaking his head at me, no, I must have missed that meeting. All right. No, that, that's all I had, I favor 1,000 feet, and I don't think I've reached a conclusion about the, where to put the turtle doves. I, I'm concerned about parking on the street because of safety, we've had two people hit. I, I think that the concerns about the impact on the, on the, on the strips between the sidewalk and the street are less problematic for me. But again, I mentioned that none of these policy choices are necessarily good choices, and that's not a reflection of Amanda or, or anybody. It's just this is a really challenging area to, to try and regulate and regulate fairly and respect the, the impacts on neighborhoods, while also just the basic humanity of people who are just struggling to survive in our community, and it's a problem that's increasing. So I'm very curious to hear what other people have to say about the, about the safety of the turtle doves.
Thank you, Sal. Zach?
Thank you. On the two issues you're looking for input on tonight, given that you're asking us just to come back for more information, the subject of the distance, I- of the distance, I would be inclined to look at the greater distance of what we've bandied about tonight as being 1,000. And I think pulling Remy's example in of of the short term rental that came through when I was a planning commissioner those years ago, and we saw really interesting maps around with distance bubbles and to show the efficacy. And so I think maybe without, you know, we're coming up with a way to to show the difference on on several different years, the maybe even in the hot, hot, the areas where we find the most trouble with these, showing the difference between 500 and 1,000 laid out on the map would be most helpful just to show, you know, this takes care of this entire swath, and so the movement would have to be this at a 500 versus 1,000, I think, is is super helpful. So that'd be the information I would like to see. And as now, I would lean towards a little bit larger, but to have some science behind that, I think seeing a map would be helpful. In that regard, sorry for the work. And I and then on the on the where do we where do we put them? It's a little bit of a Kobayashi Maru, but I'm leaning more towards the parking strip. But I'd like to see direct staff to to research Dave David Renshaw's concerns about franchise agreements and their rights and entitlements to those areas. But if it to me, that comes down to, you know, prioritizing life safety over property. And so that that's an easy choice for me, as long as we're not stepping into some legal mess there with with the franchise agreements and what exists in or around that space. But I would be more inclined to put them there while we work on a better place to put them. So I hope that's good direction, and I hope that's a good weighing in.
Well, I'll just say that I'm definitely hoping that I can poll a Captain Kirk and find a solution to an unsolvable problem.
Aliou.
Okay, so I think that I've heard from everybody about the distance. And and one of the things again that for going back now to the turtle dove pods is that we really do need to find a place where they where we can say they can go and that's safe, but also to, you know, it's just not it's hard to find an eloquent and beautiful solution to this. So I'm happy to take in any further discussion about that. And I will say, since we are asked assuming that this gets continued to February 8, I will be asking for this also to go on our executive team agenda because the more minds around a problem, you know, maybe we can find a better solution. So I'll bring it up with our executive team to see if maybe there's something else that we haven't thought of that may be a better solution. But I'd also like to hear any further comments about about the turtle doves and where they go.
Well, Amanda, if I might, when we were working on and Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Thank you. When we were working on the Safe Overnight Parking Program, initially, one of the conversation pieces we had multiple times was about taking one or a couple of parking spaces in city of of city owned properties and designating them as an overnight space. Now, at that time, we were looking at vehicles, and there were lots of concerns about those vehicles and monitoring and providing bathrooms. But all of those concerns, I think, are kind of wiped out by if these were to be designated for a turtle dove space because it's in and of itself mobile, right? We're not it's not going to have expired plates. It it's supposed to it's supposed to move regularly anyway, so we don't have the associated concerns with needing to provide a bathroom, et cetera. I recognize there could be problems, but you with those spaces, I get that. But it could be a minimal impact spread throughout the city, and it doesn't need to be attached to a park as well so that we are not starting to confuse what's happening in and outside of our parks. We have lots of city owned parking lots throughout the city, and I don't know what their usage is, but I know the nighttime usage is very low and especially over the last couple of years. And so that would be one suggestion of designating one or maybe two spots in various city owned parking lots overnight for turtle dove camping only. Thank you.
Let's go to Adam. You're muted.
Yeah. Remy, great, great point on that. I do remember that discussion. And yeah, I'd be open to seeing what that would look like utilizing some city owned parking lots that aren't related to parks for turtle doves, but definitely keeping it exclusive to turtle doves. I was also curious if we could get some staff feedback on voting on this at the next meeting as an emergency ordinance instead of waiting a typical 30 days since a lot of our citizens that have been emailing us have been emailing us since September and October, and we had a work session in December, and now we're gonna be voted on in February. So they really wouldn't get any any relief from these abandoned vehicles until March at the earliest if we voted on it as a normal ordinance and other counselor feedback on that as well. Thank you.
Yes, I would I would definitely like to hear some counselor feedback on the on the emergency. That is something that we could do, and we just have to put an extra finding in the in the ordinance. But yes, we could do that if that's the council's prerogative.
Remy?
Unfortunately, I left my hand up.
Okay, let's let's move over to Kelly.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, my idea is sort of a take on Remy's. You know, if we if we did use the planner strips, I mean, I know that none of the businesses really want this to happen, but there could be some kind of like shifting scale, like everybody gets parks in this particular area for 72 hours, and they will not come back to that area for another month or two. I mean, that would require a tremendous amount of business coordination, I realize, but just providing a different way of looking at it and, you know, they could take advantage of it. They're terrible camping for one for 72 hours.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I actually would be semi open to Remy's idea. I had actually was getting ready to send out an email asking a similar question to have it be brought up to your executive team. I don't know how that would play out in terms of allowing camping for one group and not for another essentially by having parking spots. So I'd be curious the legal ramifications that we could be looking at. And I don't know how that would play out in what the police department is dealing with in enforcement and other areas. Would that provide would that cause any conflicts for them? So I'd love to hear those two feedbacks in this conversation while we're having it.
With respect to feedback regarding allowing within the city parking lot, I think it's just the recognition that some, you know, although in a perfect world, they'd be they'd leave, you know, just understanding that that's not always the case. They 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 tend to set up shop like we've seen out at McDaniel. But that being said, you know, at least they've got a place and we can educate them about, you know, where to go. Right now, we're telling them we don't know.
Okay. And in terms of having differing sets of rules for differing groups, is that going to be problematic?
I'd lean on Amanda for that for legal.
I mean, the thing that I think about, so I I was more concerned about parks because we close down parks and we don't let anybody camp overnight in parks. The one thing I think about is right now, RVs can be on the street and pods can't. Turtle love pods can't. So we're already creating a we're already creating a delineation. So I think if if we could find space and if we felt like we have the capacity to be on it, you know, from an enforcement perspective, that may a city owned parking lot with a few spots designated may work. I mean, I definitely want to brief that with internally before I'm saying that would be a staff recommendation, but I think it's something worth exploring that we should talk with the staff about.
I think that's worth exploring, and specifically, I think when it when it comes forward, I think should you make that recommendation to us kind of a picture of what that looks like, which which parking lots you're talking about so we can kind of have an idea what we're facing? Is there anything you're asking feedback for? Did I hit it all?
What did what'd you feel about the emergency declaration? Making it an emergency or?
I think if we don't act quickly, we're going to have some very frustrated residents in our community. We already have frustrated residents in our community. And so I would be in favor of trying to resolve their concerns in a way that's equitable for everybody.
Right. Yeah. And the other the other thing that I'd want to talk with staff through with staff is about the parking lot option is it probably can't just be, you know, one or two spots if that's the only place that turtle doves can go because there's not just one or two turtle dove pods. So we've got to think through, can we handle the capacity of pods that there are? And if we can't, where do the others go if we're not going to allow them in a parking lot? So we've got to we've got to think through the logistics of that to figure out what a what a good proposal would be.
Fair enough, but and and again, good idea there, Council President. Thank you.
Kelly?
Oh, I'm gonna hit my idea again. Oh, by the way, I am totally in favor of the emergency thing. It's since this really is discomforting the business community, maybe giving them some options. I mean, I'm sure they'd be more than happy for us to put them on city parking lots, but perhaps they have some suggestions that they could use. I mean, I seriously think this has got to be kind of a two way street. It's gonna affect them one way or the other unless we stick them all on city parking lots, and I don't think that really is going to work well. So maybe some sort of survey or possibility, something like that. I mean, Susan Muir is wonderful at surveys. Subtle there. But I I'm not seeing city parking lots handling the whole thing.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just since there's interest in this, I just want to expand on this and also just say that Amanda and Chief, we did a lot of work on this, and I'm sure Director Richards also has a lot of information from when we did this. Certainly, I also want to be clear that at that time, we were not looking into a parking lot that would provide multiple overnight spaces. We were looking into a multiplicity of parking lots that would provide one or two spaces, each specifically not trying to create any type of potential for conflict or, you know, create we're not trying to create densities. We weren't trying to create any any mass of people from various households staying in the same place. And I certainly, if you want to explore it, I'm sure I can find a file that says Safe Overnight Parking Program on it and refresh. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Sal?
Thanks, Mayor. So I I I'm definitely in favor of the the emergency clause. I'm definitely in favor of 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 opening up some city parking lots that are not connected to a a park for parking. I do think, however, that in addition to that, just because of the the number of turtle doves that we have, that we probably should provide some additional accommodation. And although I'm not very comfortable with that accommodation being streets as opposed to planner strips, I'm kind of wondering whether some of the wider lower traffic streets might also be a second place that that we could identify as as appropriate for for these turtle doves on an overnight basis. And I do agree with Remy's comment that, you know, at the time, the overnight camping program was discussed, the intent was to limit the number of households that might be congregating together. But the overnight camping program that we discussed at that point was more of a longer term, you know, or intermediate term rather, like a month or or more than a few weeks at a time as opposed to something that was intended to be overnight. So I did just want to flag that, although I do agree that that we want to generally try and keep the densities down and and do the best that we can to minimize conflicts with neighbors. So pretty easy problem for you to solve there, Amanda. Good luck.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll turn it back to Amanda.
Yes, so unless there is a motion on the table to approve it tonight, which we're not recommending, we'll just go ahead and continue this for the next council meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion for ordinance number 5109? Seeing none, we will pull ordinance 5109 and bring it to our next council meeting after the input that was given tonight can be incorporated. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you got Chief hanging out.
Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, and I and I want to I don't want to take this any longer, but I will just because I know the council addresses two or three years ago, and I know it's a it's a big it's a it's a big bite, and the work that you do is going to make a difference down the road because it's providing clarity and some answers that our staff are sort of scratching our heads at. So heavy lifts are important, and the PD appreciate.
Well, thanks for your work and input on it, too, because you're the guys that are implementing it, and we know that we've got to make this a better approach for all. Well, let's take a look at 7B, and we will now consider the matter of ordinance number 5110. Does any counselor object to having this ordinance read by title only? Seeing none, Amanda, would you read ordinance 5110 by title only?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the first reading of ordinance number 5110 and ordinance approving a zone change from OR Office Residential to C3 General Commercial for a 0.2 acre parcel at 436 Southeast Baker Street.
Okay, we'll call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present. Heather?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. Sorry, I was closing down all my my projects I was working on. So before you as an ordinance, it's coming to you as a recommendation from the Planning Commission. As you know, the the land use recommendations from the Planning Commission where you're the final decision making body, our code says it comes to you in ordinance based on their recommendation, and then you have the option to decide if you want to vote and approve the ordinance and approve their recommendation, or if you want to schedule a future public hearing and consider more information, or if you want to deny the Planning Commission's recommendation and provide new findings. So tonight is that decision making process. Claudia, could I have screen sharing? Okay, thank you. So I wanted to bring to you a summary of what the the actual land use application is and then the Planning Commission's recommendation for that. You should just see one slide. Is that true?
Yes.
So this is a rezone from our Office Residential Zone to our General Commercial Zone, which is C3 for 436 Southeast Baker Street. So it's this property right here, and just to give you some perspective, red is our C3 zone. This brown color here is our OR zone, and this pink color is our high density residential zone or R4 zone. This is the subject site. It is an improved site. It has its historic landmark on it, and it's about 0.2 acres. Its frontage is here on Baker Street on 99W. This is a picture of the historic landmark that's on the site as it has been recently restored. The property owner just went through a restoration project on this on this property. So the owner is Teresa Drebbdell. She held the neighborhood meeting on October 26, and then she submitted the zone change application on October 28. It was deemed complete on November 22, and then based on that date, our 120 day land use decision time limit expires on March 21. So if you want to have a public hearing, we will need to schedule that public hearing for your second meeting in February. So if you wanna have a public hearing, we will need to schedule that public hearing for your second meeting in February. Notice of the application, uh, for the Planning Commission public hearing was mailed to property owners on November twenty-fourth. It was also published in the News Register on December seventh. And the Planning Commission hosted a public hearing on December sixteenth, took testimony and voted unanimously to support the, the, um, to recommend support of the land use application. So your consideration tonight is, um, based on the Planning Commission's recommendation is, does it meet the criterion test for a rezone from Office Residential to General Commercial? So that's a three-part test in our, in our comprehensive, in our, excuse me, our zoning ordinance. Um, the proposed change is consistent with the relevant goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is orderly and timely, and it considers the development patterns in the area, the surrounding land uses, and any changes which may have occurred in the neighborhood to warrant the proposed amendment. And then utilities and services can be efficiently provided to ser, to serve the proposed, um, rezone. So walking through that really quickly, the proposed change is consistent with the relevant goals in the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan and this code. And it's, uh, the comprehensive plan designation for this property is commercial. So the underlying proper, the underlying comprehensive plan designation is commercial. The intention is the frontage on both sides of Baker is meant to be cur, commercial up and down the street. The proposed amendment is orderly and timely and also considers the pattern of development in the area. This is where, uh, Planning Commission had some deliberation and came to their conclusion. If you notice that around this property, um, you see general commercial. And if you remember the area, I just showed you, this is all developed as sort of strip commercial along here, as well as here. So what this would do is it's not a spot zone. It actually continues the growth of general commercial that's occurring on Baker Street as that street has transitioned into a state highway. And it is no longer a residential neighborhood in that area. There is, to the north of it is Office Residential. And then over here, you have a residential area that's bordered, that has frontage on Cowell Street. They take their entrance off of that and then migrates in this direction. So utilities and services can be efficiently provided. They already are, um, provided to the site cuz it is an improved site. There is a comment from McMinnville Water and Light though, that if this rezone moves forward, the property owner will need to work with them on, um, upgrading the backflow preventer that's on the site to get it to a commercial product. The existing conditions, we had some discussion at the Planning Commission about that cuz it's a rezone for a property that is improved. So we wanted to make sure the existing conditions were in conformance with the new zone. It is a built environment, so this is a site plan that the property owner provided for, for us in terms of the existing conditions. And based on that, it meets the, um, the setbacks and yard requirements in that zone, the building height and the, um, use limitations for outside storage. So all of the development standards that are in the C-three zone are met with the existing improvements on site. And there wouldn't be nonconformity. ODOT manages Highway ninety-nine. This already has an access permit to Highway ninety-nine, so they had no issues with the proposed rezone. Engineering had no issues. McMinnville Water and Light provided their comment about the, uh, need for a double-check backflow preventer. And then Building's comment was that, um, the applicant has made it known that, that they are interested in this being a lodging product, uh, in the C-three zone. And so it may not have more than five guest rooms in it to retain its residential occupancy. Um, and if it has more than five guest rooms, it will be viewed as a commercial occupancy and will need to go through a building code review for that, for that. We did get an email from Silla McClellan before the, um, Planning Commission public hearing. She's a planning commissioner and she did recuse herself from this public hearing. She lives on Cowell Street, so that neighborhood that's on the backside of this, of this parcel. And she concerns about the future proposed use as a short-term rental as there's already one located on Cowell Street. The Planning Commission, um, discussion focused on the fact that this is really the best use for the property moving forward in terms of preserving it as a historic landmark. It is a, it's a residential, it's an old residential home, um, based on its frontage on Baker Street and the amount of traffic that travels there. The belief that it can be a, a higher-end residential home on that, on that, um, on that, um, major arterial is something that, uh, the Planning Commission did not feel would move forward and would threaten the, the landmark status of the property, that it would need to be rehabilitated into something else entirely. And the short-term rental's not impacting the residential neighborhood because it's on the border of the residential neighborhood and nestled on, in this commercial strip. And the residential neighborhood started with the frontage on Cowell Street. So with that, the Planning Commission made the recommendations to you as the city council to approve the rezone from Office Residential to General Commercial for four-three-six Southeast Baker Street. And you have the option to decide if you wanna move forward with that tonight by approving the ordinance or requesting a public hearing for more information or denying the, um, application with, uh, findings.
Thank you, Heather. Uh, let's go ahead and move to council discussion as to what you'd like to do. Kelly?
All right. Uh, personally, I see not, see no reason to, uh, pass this on for any further open discussions other than tonight. It seems like, uh, to me, a very good use of the property. And I think we should go with the change in zoning.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go to Remy.
Thank you. I think it, it generally makes sense, um, given the surrounding zoning. I, I do, I, I guess I would push back just on, a little bit on that last statement that there's not an impact on, uh, the short-term rentals and have impact on surrounding neighborhoods. I've actually had, uh, neighbors, not from Cowells, um, but others, uh, because there is still some housing around there, uh, that, that hasn't, um, transferred over to being mostly commercial use. And I've, I've received complaints, um, about, uh, about, about that because it's, you know, um, cuz that's happened. So, um, but I think generally it, it fits in with the, the, the change of use that's happening. And I, I don't see a reason not to move forward at this time. Although I would, I would love a little bit of, uh, delve into, um, what, uh, Silla's concern was about the proximity of the two houses. Is that something that, that is, is there a limiting factor right now that would go away?
I think she was worried about the sound. She complained about it being very noisy at least one night.
So currently, I think to Counselor Drapkin's question. So currently, the Office Residential Zone, although it has an underlying comprehensive plan, doesn't, commercial comprehensive plan designation, we treat it as a residential zone relative to short-term rental. So, uh, it does have a spacing standard associated with it. And there, when the, um, property owner for this property was rehabilitating her property, there was a short-term rental that came in behind it or catty corner to it. It's within two-hundred feet and was permitted as a short-term rental off of Coles.
Okay, uh, Sal?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry. Um, so currently, even though it's operating as a rental property, it's not operating as a short-term rental property? Um, um, I, I, I mean, it's within two-hundred feet, so it wasn't allowed? But it is? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm missing something.
Yeah, so no, so the property owner just went through a significant restoration project on the property, so it's been vacant. Um, and that restoration project, um, I don't know, I, how long it took, but for at least the past year, she's been working on that. And so it has not been operating as a short-term rental. When she went to apply for the permit for a short-term rental in the Office Residential Zone, there was one that had been approved, catty corner on Cole Street. So it was within the two-hundred-foot spacing distance.
Does, does that answer your questions, Remy? Okay, good. Zach?
Uh, thanks. I don't see the need to get this to a, a public hearing if that was a question to me. And I'll hold my other questions until we get to that point.
Anyone else? Let's go into any further discussion?
Um, yeah, Mayor, I, I just wanna say I'm, I'm, um, you know, I guess I'm in favor of this. But I am frustrated. It's in my neighborhood. Um, and, uh, it feels like every single housing product that is coming into my neighborhood is, uh, short-term, is becoming short-term rentals. And I feel like a lot of the, uh, housing inventory that we're creating in the town is getting used up into short-term rentals. And, uh, it's just frustrating to me that most of the products that we've come up with are, are either, um, you know, suitable for people moving here from other places that already have sold a, a piece of land, uh, or, or we're catering to the, um, the tourism economy. And, uh, I understand it's consistent with the zone, and I'm gonna vote yes on this. But I am definitely frustrated, um, right now because I'm seeing my neighborhood become, uh, not a residential neighborhood, but becoming a short-term vacation rental neighborhood. And I, I don't think that was our intent, uh, on this council with some of the ordinances that we've done, so.
Yes, and I can share with you, Counselor Peralta, that Planning Commission had a similar dialogue, um, when this, when this was rolling through their process, uh, cuz they had two public hearings at night. One was for a short-term rental permit that had come in for, uh, that had gone to a public hearing process. And so I believe they've requested a special work session so that we can go over their work plan and we can talk about when they can put into the work plan another review of the short-term rental codes and the values and principles behind them, um, in terms of what's occurring in the community.
You're muted, Sal.
Excuse me, I would definitely appreciate that conversation, Heather, because I feel like there's a sort of policy sweet spot between, you know, creating a circumstance where, say, senior citizens can age in home by renting out a room or something like that, um, in a residential zone, and just having these ghost neighborhoods where there's, you know, they're not, they're not people living in them. There's just people visiting on weekends or whenever they can fill it. I've seen it happen and bend. It, it, it destroys neighborhoods. I'm seeing a lot of opposition to some of the neighborhoods in our town. So I, I welcome an opportunity to review that.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go up to Zach.
Thank you. Um, some questions. Um, is the, uh, current applicant, uh, has been the owner for some time now? Through the, you know, the, if you said it's a lengthy rehab and they're the one that rehabbed it, so presumably they've owned it for at least the length of the rehab and, and so on. Okay, is it, is it currently for sale? Is it, is it transitioning to a new sale? I, I know that it came up on the market and I see now it's listed as, uh, it has a pending offer. So is this still active? Is this moot or what's?
So I, I don't, I know that it was, uh, on the market. I don't know if the offer or contract is still active. That would be a question for the applicant. I know the applicant's, uh, legal representative is here tonight if you wanted to open it up to ask those questions. And Amanda would need to guide you through that since we're not in a public hearing process.
Sure. Okay, if you don't know it, then if we get there, I'll ask it. But, um, more for information. Uh, so you, and you referenced, I see, I think it even included there, it's an A resource, A-one-thirty-six or three-thirty-six or something. Did they, uh, did they get HLC approval for any of the applicable work?
The, the applicable work that they did did not require HLC approval.
Oh, I was, yeah, I was able to look at some of the stuff on, online for that real estate listing. It looked like some nude dormers had been punched in in the back carport area that weren't on that original stuff. But I know pictures are hard to verify. So interesting, interesting. Um, okay, and then has this been, so I guess Remy got my other question about has it been operating as a short-term? And then I, uh, in the packet, normally, I feel like normally we get notes on the Planning Commission conversation. Those weren't included in this one, any reason as to why?
Yes, so we have lost seventy-five percent of our planning staff in the last six months. So there are some things that we are struggling to keep up with. The Planning Commission minutes for the December sixteenth ma, meeting, we're not available. We're usually able to turn those around in twenty-one days. And because of the need to get this decision done within a hundred-and-twenty days, we needed to bring this to you for consideration tonight. You can postpone your decision and I can try to get that to you for your next meeting if you want to include that in the record.
Okay. And then, um, I don't know how to articulate the last question, so I, I think I can, I can, I can cede my time and come back. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, let's go to Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, I wanna preference what I'm about to say is this is not a hill to die on. But I just, I just wanna express it. I, I feel like, um, I would probably lean more to wanting to have a public hearing. Um, I feel like, um, one of the knocks that I routinely made when I was running for city council and, um, I hear made regularly is we don't give enough opportunity for public input. And I know that's kind of a, a protracted way to do it. But, um, so I just kinda feel like, I, I just wanna say, I think it would be better to give opportunity than not. But if the will of the council outside of me is to not do that, I'm not gonna die on this hill.
Thank you, Chris. Let's go up to Kelly.
Oh, I, I'm confused, but never mind. I feel dumb. I still don't feel like there's need for public hearing, but I, I share Sal's concern about this. I've had a, uh, one of the people in my ward contact me. He's tried to buy a home twice within the last few months. And, uh, both times it was sold out from, you know, he was like the second highest bid and he lost out. And they, uh, you know, he's a low-income person and he needs to have housing and he wants to have it down in the downtown area. So it's really unfortunate to see this continued proliferation of these homes. I, I understand, you know, they could be used for other purposes, but they're not being. So I, I too would like to see a little bit more discussion on this particular item. Not necessarily on the zoning issue, but on, uh, these, uh, homes. Bed, breakfast, whatever.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go to Remy.
Um, yeah, I think I, I would love a, uh, I don't know that this needs to go to a public hearing either. I've got, um, I have some concern because I definitely had a complaint about, um, this facility. And I, and now that if it wasn't being, if it wasn't being used, I, I just want a chance to investigate my own.
So Counselor Drapkin, I need to clarify. So they did, after they restored the project, and, and I believe the neighborhood meeting comments are also in your packet, um, where some of the neighbors commented on this as well. After they restored the home, they did put it into the short-term rental market for a very short time. We got a notice of it and we went out to investigate it. And then we asked them to stop doing that. And that's what started this discussion. So there, there were some nights when it was rented out. I don't know how many nights it was rented out before, before it got into code enforcement and this dialogue occurred. They thought as an Office Residential Zone with an underlying commercial designation that they, that they, in McMinnville, in our commercial zones, we do not make short-term rentals go through a permitting process cuz they're considered lodging.
Right.
Without rate permitted use.
Okay. Um, ooh, uh, well, oh, I always say, I, I, that, it, that, in a sense, it makes it a little more problematic in my mind. I always say, you know, our zoning is supposed to dictate where the business goes. And, and when we've had things come before us that are asking for zone changes because people have made an investment and, 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 uh, but that it didn't match the zoning, that to me is a harder justification. I recognize that doesn't annihilate the other things in this request, that it is largely surrounded by commercial. It does, it does give me pause. Um, I'm, uh, I, I think, I think that, I think the draw that I'm hearing on going to, to, um, a public hearing maybe isn't really about this, um, it, in particular. It, perhaps, maybe it's more about the kind of dissatisfaction with the, the two-hundred-foot rule and certainly. maybe it's more about the kind of dissatisfaction with the 200-foot rule, and certainly, if that's the conversation that's happening, I also, I, just so you know, I also thought that was way too small of a distance when that came out of Planning Commission. But, you know, but I, but I don't want to force something into a public hearing because it's bringing up other concerns in the city, so I do have a little bit of pause with this at the moment, thank you.
Okay, let's go to Zach.
Thank you. Staff report under discussions, you list four bullet points, staff in the Planning Commission supported this application for the following reasons, the fourth one is, any other use of the property that is not residential would require sufficient modifications to the historic exterior of the property, can you tell me how staff came to that, that line, that belief, what, I mean, what, what do staffs?
That was not, that was not a staff belief, that was a Planning Commission dialogue and their discussion that they had, so what I was trying to convey in the staff report was the discussion the Planning Commission had during their deliberation when they were making their decisions.
So staff doesn't agree with that portion of the application?
I'm not saying we agree or disagree, we haven't evaluated it for that reason, our role is to bring the Planning Commission recommendation to you. Now, if it was, if it was, if the change of use occurred in the property, so the building officials commented about it being five rooms, that's relative to the fact that we allow five on, five people who aren't related to live in a residential home together as a single-family resident. If it goes above five rooms, then it's considered a commercial product, and then, then, then we are looking at it as a commercial building code application, just as we would with an office space, and it would need to go through that review in the building code for that different, for that change of use, which may implicate some changes to the property. Accessibility is, you know, an obvious one, so there would be need for ramping and things like that.
Before I circle back to ask what the ADA accessibility is on this, would it necessitate a change of use, or would it be considered an existing nonconforming use and have to be brought up as a change of use?
No, so the change in use is how the property is used under the building code.
Right.
It's not, it's not a land use process, it's a building code process, and that's, that's what the Planning Commission's deliberation was. So a house that becomes an office is a change in use in the building code, so then, therefore, because of the change of use, it's going into a different classification in the building code, which then requires modifications to occur in that property to make it a commercial property as an office space.
Right, but there's other commercial opportunities that could be afforded to this structure, not an office, that wouldn't require a change of use?
I'm not sure I would know which, which use, that would be a commercial use, that's not a residential use, that wouldn't trigger the change in use in the building code.
Okay, what is the ADA accessibility for this?
Again, that review has not occurred, Counselor, the, the decision-making process for this land use application was based on that three-part test that's in the code as to whether or not it meets the code for a rezone. So we didn't do a building code review on this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate, I guess, my position, I do feel that this application meets the criteria, and I'm frustrated by the criteria that we have, on a separate question, I'm frustrated by the narrow density that we have for these vacation rentals, I don't think that that frustration should impact this application simply because this is moving towards commercial, I am frustrated about the effect on my neighborhood, but at the same time, I feel like, you know, this applicant has taken a good-faith approach to trying to deal with our process, and they did get a unanimous support from the Planning Commission. I will say that from my point, you know, these types of, whether it's a change in use, or whether it's just approving a challenged, a challenged short-term vacation rental in the future, is going to be a much harder lift for me to get to, just because I just feel like it's so impacting negatively our, our land inventory in the city, and, you know, this may be the last one I vote yes on for a while, but, but that's my, I guess that's my view on it if we end up going forward, and I'm wondering, you know, as we close up this discussion, if we should just maybe call the question here pretty soon.
Yep. Thank you, Sal. Seeing no raised hands, I will ask for a motion to pass Ordinance Number 5110 to a second reading.
I so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Sal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Let's see, with a dissent, Ordinance Number 5110 passes by a vote of five to one on its first reading.
Please put that down as five to two, I can give that, but none, but it's a nay.
Okay, thank you, Adam. So it will be?
Three, four, three.
That's too, that's too many counselors.
Yeah, four, two.
Mayor, I think.
Sounds like it's three to three, it sounds like it's three to three to me, but.
I'm a no as well.
So that's three to three.
I'm sticking as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
On the first reading.
On the first reading. Okay, so we are three to three. So Amanda, do I weigh in?
You weigh in.
And I would vote yes, so that brings us four to three on the first reading, but it'll be brought, be brought back to us for a second reading on February 8th, is that correct? Okay. And so that handles Ordinance Number 5110. That takes care of our agenda for this evening, it's 10:27, and I will adjourn the City Council meeting, and we will now go to another Zoom call to do our executive session. Thank you, everyone.